Good morning, everybody. I believe the mics have been tested. I just get a little thumbs up from technology. We are good to go. Yes, I've got my thumbs up. In that case, I'm going to ask all of you, now that I have called us into order, to rise, please, for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Texas flags. And do we have a volunteer this morning? I'd appreciate that, Commissioner.
You want to let everybody kind of filter in so that...
Yes, it looks like we're going to bring in some folks from Annapolis.
Put them where?
Welcome. Perfect timing. If you all would just... There's room on this other side as well to spread out, and we welcome you. We are at the point where we're about to have a prayer. So we'd ask you to join us in prayer this morning, and please remain standing as we will follow our invocation with the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America as well as our Texas flag. Commissioner Chesney?
Thank you, Judge. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are so grateful that we are here today. We are grateful that you have given us another day to be on this earth and to enjoy the wonders of what you have given us. We are grateful for this great country and this great state and all of those that are here today to serve Nuasis County and to keep in mind that we also serve you as well. Lord, this is a difficult time in our country for many, many reasons, and this is certainly the time that we must and do lean on you the hardest and the strongest. We are grateful for your son, Jesus Christ. We ask that you bless everyone here today. We ask that you keep... Help us all keep in mind that we are here to serve the greater good and that we are here to do so in a peaceful and civil manner. We thank you for everything you've given us, for everything you've done for us. We ask you to forgive us of our sins. And these things we say, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us. In Jesus Christ's name, we ask these things and pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one arm in the hands of the government.
Thank you to commissioners. That was lovely on the prayers. We appreciate that, Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, Judge.
And at this time, I'd like to call the date and all of the impertinent information about today's meeting. So today is November the 4th, 2020. And it is, let's see, I've got 9:08 a.m. on the clock. We, of course, are at the third floor at the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 North Leopard. And for the clerk, I do certify that all commissioners are present, and therefore, a quorum has been made. At this time, I'll look to have a safety briefing. Timothy, Rebecca's with us this morning. Good morning, Rebecca. If everybody would give Ms. I mean us your attention. This is the important safety briefing for our courthouse.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Judge, commissioners, and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, November 4th, a beautiful day, I might add, is being here... Held here in the third floor Nuasis County Courthouse Commissioners' courtroom located at 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the courtroom past the Human Resources Office. Please note there is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Tyner. Participants CPR-certified in attendance will be Dale and Edward. However, keep in mind, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Panne street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street, and everyone stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom door doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our safety topic for the month of November is Thanksgiving. Lower-risk activities include Thanksgiving in your home or virtually with an extended family, but you need a large television. Moderate risk includes a socially distant outdoor event with family and friends from your neighborhood. If it is indoors, having small social gatherings. Higher risk includes large indoor gatherings. Everyone knows we must bite the bullet and sacrifice unless you are certain that the people you are dealing with are not infected. It is understandable that everyone has their traditional, emotional, warm family get-togethers during the holidays. It is natural. You've been waiting all year. We must really be careful this time, and each individual family member must evaluate the risk and benefits of doing that. Also, I would like to thank Timothy Everest, Captain Laura Garcia, Kara Sands, Eric Gutierrez, Diana Mungia, Annette Mutte, and Jason Parker for everyone's participation in pulling together our safety plan for elections. I would also like to thank the public for being mindful of the COVID-19 guidance from the CDC. It was a very safe, successful event. And that includes... That concludes our risk management safety briefing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You make safety fun.
Yes, ma'am.
I like that. I think we should all take a little bit of a lead from Rebecca here this morning. And I think that there can be a positive spin on our thanks and our giving.
Yes, ma'am.
And I really do... I'm kind of glad that we have members of our young adult community here because you're sort of key to making it both thankful and part of our giving to one another. So thanks for sharing that with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, everyone.
We appreciate that. And my heartfelt thanks, too, for everyone making it a safe event last night on floor three. For those of you that don't know, in the public, we had a lot of people here, but it was really well, I thought, put together, and everybody was not just socially distanced, but you were able to function. And I don't know why we don't do it that way all the time. Elections got to do their thing uninterrupted on floor one. Media was on floor two. Public was on three with candidates. The courtroom was open. Connie did a great job keeping all the televisions on and the information flowing. That's what it means to have a safe courthouse.
Yes, ma'am.
So my hat's off to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Edward, at this time, with no other further safety messages, I'd like to move on to public comment. Is there any? None from the sign-up? I have one. Tyner, anybody online?
I don't see anybody, Judge.
Okay, okay. Well, then...
I know them all.
You do?
They have items.
In that case, again, and I think it's also important for our young adult community, you get to witness history. Some say you got to do that last night, too, or be a part of it. But you get to be a little part of history here in Nuasis County, and that's because I have the pleasure to introduce to you as members of our constituency, but also to our Commissioners' Court, our very first-ever Nuasis County Fire Marshal. Please help me welcome to the podium. I'd like to share a little information about him and have him say a few words. Officer Jose F. Olivares is no longer. Now, you need to address him as Marshal, Fire Marshal. Welcome, Olivares, Fire Marshal Olivares, welcome. Let me just share a little bit about your background, and then please introduce your family members that you've brought with us here today. But out of the applications that we received, and we did receive some wonderful applications, which is a testament to law enforcement in our community. I really particularly admired your work in investigations. You have a criminal justice degree from St. Leo University, and you have come to us from the fine CCPD. And so I know Chief Markle, when I spoke to him, he was sad to let you go. He's, "Oh, man, like, you stole him." But it makes me feel good that you are so well thought of at the highest levels there. But you've had a great career, and I think it's important to note, and I wanted to make sure that it was... Yes, you are an expert infantryman and Army Achievement Medal recipient. And so I know that it'll make my friends here on the court who are veterans very, very happy that we have hired, yet once again, a United States Army retired military veteran. Congratulations on this very fine appointment. And again, this is my opportunity. Forgive us, but we're kind of old-fashioned. I want to welcome you the right way. Congratulations.
Thank you.
By the way, not to be undone. You also served your time also as a Nuasis County Sheriff's Deputy as well.
I did, yes. Thank you, Your Honor. I truly appreciate the opportunity, the court as well. Thank you for supporting her in her endeavor. I'm super excited. You guys don't know how excited I am to take on this new role. Law enforcement is where I come from. Not to say that I'm no expert by no means, but I can kind of do it with my eyes sleeping and closed, you know? Super excited about learning a new career.
Yes.
You know? So... And I'm glad to be back home to Nuasis County where it all got started back 28 years ago.
I was going to say, I was going to tell you when, but I said, "Oh, I better not," you know? Before these kids were born.
Probably, probably.
But... And really, your background as a narcotics investigator is really something I wanted to point out to the audience and to the court. You see, guys, a Fire Marshal will be in charge of any arson investigations. So you don't necessarily need to know how to fight a fire, but you better know how to investigate one, particularly when it causes harm. And so Fire Marshal Olivares' experience as an investigator is going to serve this county so well. As we grow, we're realizing there are so many areas that are having... Experiencing industrial growth, and we think we can do a better job managing that growth for all of you to come back home and live and work and enjoy this beautiful place that you call home. So he'll be training with Chief Rocha and be receiving quite a few certifications. We are working on a permanent home on the fifth floor for him. We may shuffle around a little bit. We're looking for space. But commissioners, would you like to also welcome Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, thanks, Judge. We are appreciative of this. This was a position that the court felt unanimously about, that we really needed this in Nuasis County. The fact that we were able to find someone with your qualifications is outstanding. We really welcome you and look forward to seeing you without the mask on, so I'll recognize you without, you know, your mask on. It's kind of hard to recognize people these days, right? That's why I wear my clear one. I think everybody ought to wear the clear ones so everybody can see everybody's faces. But that being said, welcome. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. If there's anything I can do to help you, I do have a little area in the unincorporated part of our county out in the London area that certainly I'd like to visit with you about at some point when you get an opportunity. But welcome aboard and good luck. And when your schedule clears up, let me know. We can get together and visit.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Congratulations. And from a Marine to an Army, thank you for serving not only in the police department, but I used to be there also. And thank you for serving in the military. And, you know, it's an honor to have somebody who wants to continue, to commit themselves to continue to serve as a public servant, especially in this county. So I want to thank you and wish you the best. And if there's anything we can do for you, you know, our door's open, you know? You don't even have to knock on it. It's open, just come on in.
I got an axe now.
It'll be... It's great to have...
You had a gun before, though.
It's great to have a peace officer, a certified peace officer in emergency management. That was something we said we really wanted, and now we have it. Commissioner Amadas?
Feel free to keep that gun, too. We're okay with that.
Commissioner Amadas.
An extra hand.
Thank you, Judge. Congratulations. I mean, I know of your credentials, certain years of knowing you and seeing you and your service to the community. And, you know, he's a businessman, former businessman as well, so he gets that aspect of being in the business community and working with those needs. And, of course, Precinct 3, like all of our precincts, have a big... I have a big rural area to focus on and cover, especially the community of Banquete, since that is not an organized city. So we'll definitely be reaching out to you for all of that help. Just glad you're on board and just wish you congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I know you'll do well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is a big win for the court and the county. I think this was brought to light whenever we had Epic come out in Precinct 1. And so this is so important. And my area is an industrial area, so congratulations. I'm glad you're on board.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Governor.
Yes, of course.
Before I end up sleeping on the couch.
Yes, I was going to prompt you.
Before I brought with me my lovely wife, Yvonne Luna.
Yvonne, welcome.
Yeah, so my backbone there, my supporter. So thank you, guys, so much. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
I start officially on Monday. So I'll be here bright and early at 7:00, right?
That's right. Absolutely.
Again, thank you, guys. I look forward to it.
Thank you. We're excited. Thank you. Okay.
Judge, would it be okay to just go ahead and do the resolution?
It would. I was just about to hit that. Let's move to resolutions at this time. And I'll let you lead, Commissioner Chesney. G1, G1.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate the opportunity. I... You know, I'm going to say a few words, and I definitely am going to want, you know, Marticia's here today. I don't think the coach was able to make it, and maybe the captains can come up and talk a little bit. So I don't want to put you on the spot, like, without giving you a little warning, but we do want to hear from you a little bit today, right? So, you know, it's awesome to be able, one, to have people back in the courtroom a little bit. We've been very fortunate in Nuasis County to... At the moment, to see our numbers drop. We hope that will continue. You know, it's been frustrating to not be able to do these recognitions for such a long period of time because we know there are so many people and groups that need to be recognized. And so many people probably know my longstanding relationship with Annapolis Christian Academy. And so it was awesome to be able to do this. I think it technically might be in Commissioner Amadas' district, and I appreciate him letting me step on his toes a little bit today. But he was so excited that he won his race last night, he didn't care. So it worked out well. And so congratulations, Commissioner Amadas, on that, too. Anyway, so, you know, this is a neat deal. You don't have the opportunity in life to have too many undefeated seasons. These girls went 22-0 in winning their state title.
Wow.
And not only did they go 22-0, they didn't just play other T-Cow groups or private schools. They played 2As and 3As, and they really competed. And I may have missed an A, so I'll let you guys talk about the schedule. They really played a very aggressive schedule. Annapolis Christian Academy is a very... Is a small, private school here. I think... I don't know what's in the high school now. Marticia?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five kids in the entire high school. I think we've got half the high school here today. So for the fact that they were able to compete at such a high level and not only win their T-Cow state championship, but compete against every team and win against every team they played, and I do want someone to kind of talk about some of the great programs you played and beat. It's an outstanding accomplishment. These are great, not only wonderful young women, but they are great, and I emphasize, great student athletes. The curriculum at Annapolis is very demanding, and to be able to keep up with the rigors of that and compete at the level that you are able to compete with and go to practices and do all the things that you've done, it's amazing. And so, again, and really, I don't care who you play. If you go 22-0 and you don't ever lose a match, that's amazing. So this is a historic season, not only because they want a state championship, but because they did it in convincing, compelling, and dominating fashion, going 22-0. So I want to congratulate you all on behalf of all the citizens of Nuasis County. We're very, very proud of what you've accomplished, and we thank you very much. And Judge, I do want to go ahead and make the motion, but then I do want the athletic director and the captains to come say a few words.
You bet.
But y'all done very well, and we're very, very, very proud of your efforts, and we're very proud of your achievements. So thank you all very much.
And Commissioner, I tell you, I was excited about my victory last night, but I was more excited about seeing these young ladies win the state championship. Let me be upfront about that. It is in the heart of Precinct 3, in my precinct, but we know that many of you live throughout the county. So this is definitely a county victory. But this school, this institution, has done so much over the years athletically, right, with different various state championships and recognitions, but also the academics and also the faith-based learning that is so important to so many families, and that's important to me. And so I love... My son goes to Hamlin, so every time I pick him up, I just look across that big old field and see the beautiful school and know all the work you've done. I've been there many times on the campus. And so this is just truly a victory for all in Nuasis County. I didn't know it was 22-0. I know, you know, y'all won the state championship. I didn't realize it was... Well, I'm glad that we have you all here representing Corpus Christi in Nuasis County and keep up the great work. And thank you for your commitment to those three pillars of faith, academics, and athletics, and, of course, being outstanding citizens. And like we always say, once you go and get your education wherever you decide to go, please choose to come back and contribute back to your community here. Thank you.
Is that a second, Commissioner Amadas?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
I'll take that motion in a second. Was there anyone else that would like to make comment?
Well, I, too, am thrilled. Anyone that knows me knows that I started my... As they say, I'm sort of a good treble kind of girl, and my first fight was a Title IX fight. And that's what got you the right, as females, to be able to play at scholarship... For scholarships at the highest level. I want you to take that with you. Somebody fought for you to be able to play athletics and to have this incredible gift to blend your education with your talent, the camaraderie that you've built. And it's not very often that we get to be perfect at anything. In fact, I always say that it's in our failures that we find our greatest successes. But in this case, celebrate your perfection, not necessarily for the 22-0, but that perfection of being a real team. Clearly, you understand what that word means, and we could probably, as adults, learn a lot from you. So I welcome you not only to court, but we celebrate your success and your parents because you don't get to where you are. This gift of this amazing school came because somebody also fought for you to be able to afford that right to be there. So thank you, parents, your administrators and your teachers as well. Deserve a round of applause. Thank you for being here with us. I want to go ahead and do the housekeeping. Tyner, do you have a resolution? You are standing there so earnestly. I know there must be a reason.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do, Judge. May I?
And Commissioner Chesney, would you like to approach with your mask? Or have... Tell me how you'd like to do this.
I'm going to let Tyner read it, and then I'd like the athletic director and the captain to speak. And then if we can, we'll take a picture down here in the well, and I'll go down there, and everybody else can stay up.
Sounds good. Then let's go through the housekeeping. Let's give them the resolution in its right form. I've got a motion and a second. Tyner will read as a formality. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Tyner?
Whereas, on October 24th, 2020, the Annapolis Christian Academy Girls Volleyball Team completed an undefeated season. Whereas, the Annapolis Christian Academy Girls Volleyball Team completed their undefeated season with the Texas Christian Athletic League State Championship, marking the team's third straight sweep in the tournament. Whereas, members of the Annapolis Christian Academy Girls Volleyball Team were honored as follows. Madison Golke, All-State First Team, All-Tournament, Most Valuable Player. Kate Messner, All-State First Team, All-Tournament. Cameron Gonzalez, All-State First Team, All-Tournament. Rebecca Carl, All-State First Team, All-Tournament. Kylie Day, All-State Second Team. Kayla Chavez, All-State Second Team. Kylie Day, All-State Honorable Mention. Belen Garcia, All-State Honorable Mention. And other team members include Alyssa Phillips, Brianna Alanese, Hannah Cortinas, Elizabeth Ausley, including head coach Lupe Cardona, assistant coach Lindsay Day, and athletic director Marticia Leifer.
Thank you, Tyner. Commissioner, would you call upon your captains?
Marticia, if you and the cap... Whoever your captains are, no, Madison is. I'm not sure if there's more others.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us and being willing to welcome and to appreciate and celebrate these young ladies that have worked very, very hard, not just this season. But I'll be honest, some of these young ladies have been playing volleyball together since the fourth grade. And you can definitely see that teamwork as it has come through for a very successful season. Not only were they 22-0, but if you know much about volleyball, you know that a varsity match consists of three sets, three out of five. They dropped five sets only that entire 22-0 season. So that means they only lost five sets. So amazing, amazing season. They played... (inaudible) Banketti, Rivetta, Beeville. So other large schools, not just small, private schools like ourselves. So the competition was amazing, and they were successful. But they were also successful in the classroom. We have some scholars on their way to college in a few months with amazing academic scholarships, and some looking at some sports scholarships as well. But I really want to take my hat off to the parents. Because of this COVID pandemic, we just weren't sure what type of season we were going to have. And so I prepared them and said, "Be ready. If I tell you Monday night we're going to have to play in Rivetta Tuesday, please be willing to do that." And they were. From one night to the next, we had to make up games. We played three times a week sometimes. And the parents did it with a smile on their face and gas in their trucks and and we made it there and back. And back for six AM practices every single day, Monday through Friday. So um just an amazing group of girls that I'm so very proud of. Um, and they'll continue, I know, once they leave Annapolis to represent our school and our community very well. Thank you.
As do you. Thank you. What lovely comments. Captain?
Yes. Um, not only did we accomplish a lot this year, I'm very proud of each and every one of these girls and the relationships that we've built. This community has been built upon relationships with each other and with God. I've get gotten to know every single one of these girls intimately. And playing with them has just been an absolute delight, and I'm glad that I got to finish my senior year with them.
And Judge, I want to tell you, Madison Golke, I've known a lot, several of these girls, persons like First Greg.
Uh huh.
An amazing young lady, an amazing group of young women.
Oh, you can see it. You can see it. What a beautiful sisterhood uh you have uh for the rest of your life. Uh, that's really the truth. And it sounds like you got a gift of something even greater upstairs than just the ball.
Yes.
So I'm really, really proud of all of you. And uh my niece plays a college volleyball, so I'm a big fan. But um the one thing that I love, it's a good word to memorize, it's dig, right? Dig. Dig deep. Dig deep into your future, into your dreams, into everything. Just remember what it felt like to go dig, and you'll be fine. You're gonna be do- you're gonna do so great in life. And it's amazing how you're living through something I just will hopefully never, ever live through ever again. But don't take it as a negative. Think about what um your coach just told you, how important it was to be ready and flexible and nimble, and your parents showed you the way. So just remember, pay it forward. Thanks, everybody. I think Commissioner would like to go down and and visit with you now.
Yeah, if y'all are okay, we'll just kind of get the girls right up in here.
If it's okay, we're gonna stay right here, Commissioner.
Yeah, we'll do a little, you know, yeah, everybody's got their masks on. Just come up up here in the well and we'll do it quick.
Tyner, would you help them? Yeah, with those tables? And then Commissioner, you can stand. The rest of us will just stand up. And if one of the parents will help with picture taking, that would be great. We got an official photographer. Yes, this one, I'm, we're sh- I'm short. I'll sneak in the in the gap. I can sneak in that gap and I'll sneak in this gap. Doing good.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Parents, you got everything? Y'all good? You can come up, sir, if you wanna get closer.
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You bet. Okay. So that was very nice. Pretty much sets a nice tone for our day, I think. By the way, I figured out that's why our forefathers here put the resolutions up front. It's meant to start us off in the right way, reminding us the best of us is amongst us. Um, we're gonna move to the discussion of the um, well, actually, Tyner, just because I want to make sure nobody's waiting for us, on H-one, is there an announcement to be made of the Employee of the Month?
Uh, no, Judge.
It's just the announcement.
Yeah, and we want to remind the supervisors to to please nominate their employees.
Okay.
Uh, like to mention, again, everybody that worked last night. Uh, uh, they get honorable mention.
Yes, they do. They do. There it was so safe and so um so streamlined and efficient. Okay, so just so you know, Commissioners, I'll move back to F, but H-one is complete. The purpose of the agenda item is just to remind all department heads and Commissioners uh to encourage uh the nomination through the process of um Employee of the Month. Uh Ty- uh Tyner's office does handle that um those receipt of those nominations. And we look forward to making that announcement at our next court, so please send them in. Okay, let's move back to F-one, and Melissa's here with us to discuss the COVID-nineteen response. And she's also here with us to do item number two, to discuss the hurricane and tropical storm recovery. Um, and of course, that's Hannah. So F-one and F-two, Melissa, you can break it apart, but we're ready for your report.
Sure. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. It's glad to, I'm glad to be uh back here. Before I started on these items, though, I would like to say something about the Fire Marshal, if that's okay.
Yes, of course.
Um, I just wanted to say we're very excited to have him on board. I know there's some some kind of talk about where he's going, um but as of yesterday, we've kind of solidified the Hilltop Community Center.
Oh, great.
So the building that's at the forefront, um it's an entire empty building. We have a full office, we have a restroom, we have a we have a kitchen, and we have a conference slash training room. So now that we have the building, we have some of the budget to do it, and then the rest of it's gonna come over time. But we're very excited. Chief Rocha, the the E S D fire chiefs are very excited about what we're gonna be able to do. And this building works perfectly because we are creating essentially a satellite office in our E O C for the Fire Marshal. And then this also creates a place for us to have a satellite E O C in the Fire Marshal's office. Um, so great things to come with that. We're very excited. Uh, Michael's already working uh and his team working with me on getting the items that we need to get him immediately started. Uh, but we're very excited here in Oasis County to have a Fire Marshal. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you.
So we will start with COVID-nineteen as it presents on the agenda first. Uh, our cases right now, we total cases is twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-two. We have fifty-four new cases, and we're at uh four hundred and forty-nine deaths. That's one new death. For our hospitalizations, we have ninety-three that are confirmed in hospital cases, and we have fourteen suspected COVID cases. Our current bed count, and again, these are very fluid numbers, they're changing even as I speak right now. But just to give you a general idea, we have twenty-eight adult ICU beds, seven pediatric ICU beds, a hundred and sixty-seven adult vents, thirty-three pediatric vents, and we have a hundred and one um adult BiPAP and six pediatric BiPAP with three hundred and ten uh medical surge beds. Our burn rate uh for COVID-nineteen thus far is uh for specifically in Oasis County, the unincorporated Oasis, is uh three million four hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-five and eleven cents. For the entire county, uh we are at uh twelve million two hundred and four thousand six hundred and forty and eighteen cents with Corpus Christi being at seven point seven million. As far as preparedness with COVID goes, um we're we're preparing right now to see an influx in COVID because of the the social gatherings that will occur during the holidays. We're also looking to see an increase in flu as we get into flu season. So ensuring that our population, our citizens, our residents are uh getting their flu vaccination and getting it in time um is really going to be essential to keeping our hospitals and our hospital beds uh clear and open. On Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, our office, uh including uh Judge Canales participated in a dishes and T D M exercise. It was a virtual tabletop exercise for vaccinations. Um, this this opened up um our eyes. It gave us an opportunity to see what kind of potential uh concerns or complications that we may experience um if the scenario were to roll down as it as it presented on the exercise. Um, supply chain issues, issues with um just the location of where we're doing uh vaccinations and the type of vaccinations that might be coming down and how that would impact our community or be difficult in our community. Our E O C team members are already aware of these things and are starting to prepare. Um, Michael's working on supply chain. Edward is working on the the potential types of vaccination runs we can do um like we do testing. So everybody is working already hard on this roll down of vaccinations that we know will come at some point. As far as testing goes, uh our testing here in the community continues to go on. First responder training is that's essential to make sure that our first responders are staying uh healthy and active is uh Monday through Thursday, nine AM, and that's at Fire Station Five, C C F D, Fire Station Five. We have one that's happening at the Richard and Borchardt Fairgrounds on Wednesday. Also on Wednesday, which is today, we have the Public Health um is performing testing as well. Friday and Saturday, our Memorial Hospital site testing will be occurring. So we're regularly testing not only the residents of Oasis County, but our employees, our first responders. And those testing operations will continue to occur while we are rolling out vaccinations. And so our team is preparing to plan and and figure out how we're gonna continue to operate both of those things. Um, because testing will still continue to be important once vaccinations roll out. That's really all I have right now for COVID. If anybody has any questions before I move on to Hurricane Hannah.
Questions, Commissioners? The only thing I want to add is that um
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back.
It's good to be back. It's difficult, but it's it feels good.
Good.
Feels good to be back.
Good. Tyner's gonna get to all of you the first um phase of the public messaging uh campaign. It's gonna come, Tyner, to you this morning, and then hopefully you'll be able to reach out to uh give it to all the Commissioners. Uh, Public Health was kind of re-tweaking some language. But what you're gonna see is creative for the holidays. You're gonna see it uh applied on bus benches and what do we call them? The bus panels? The the there's there's
Like the side of the buses.
Side of the bus. But actually, the the bus stops, there's actually like some nice panels on the side. And then um how it will, um there's there's also opportunities for digital media, billboards. And all of this is items we've already approved, but it's really um very, very strong content, English and Spanish. And this is our effort, if you'll recall, with the city of Corpus Christi, and Public Health kind of controls the 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 content. And I uh I know that she was reviewing it yesterday. And uh so I hope that you'll get it in your inbox maybe later and let us know what you think. And uh remember, this is, you know, phase one, well, there'll be more messaging. There's also strong messaging about the flu shots. I wanna not put you on the spot, but we really want to encourage people to get their flu shots. So if you haven't, maybe this messaging will get to you. And then the third thing is the COVID clinic. We've had twenty-one thousand people recover, which is wonderful. And uh but there's still people that are in the in the pipeline, and we want them to know that this COVID clinic is there for them. Or if those twenty-one thousand need some checkups, follow-up because of um effects of COVID, this clinic is for them too. And we didn't feel like we had really done as much as we could have to message that. So all of that will be in your inbox, all three campaigns. And uh Tyner, I'm not sure how it's coming to you, but but if you wouldn't mind doing that, and send it to me, too.
And this is also where Accenture uh becomes even more beneficial as we do start vaccination, we start public messaging, we start all these different operations again. Um, and having that data management system and a system that can help us uh sort through these different issues that we have and keeping track of our residents and making sure that everybody um is getting their vaccination and second round vaccination as well.
Yeah, I think if I wanted to highlight for the court, one thing, maybe you could echo what your impressions were from our call. But it definitely seems that the vaccinations that are bound for Texas are basically a one-two. So twenty-eight days apart for the first vaccine, and then the the second potential vaccine is twenty-one days apart. And so you think about that, not being able to mix and match. Think about how tricky that is to get people to come back for the for for the second round.
Data management will be critical on this one.
We're really, and we've invested a lot in that early on, and it's gonna pay big dividends for vaccines. So just want to say thank you for for, you know, those are the, those are the real pieces of details that that you've been working on, so. If there's no further questions for Melissa, I'll have her move on, but I'll give you a chance, Commissioners. Okay, would you move on to the next piece, which is Hurricane Hannah?
Sure. So right now, um at where we stand with our Hurricane uh Hannah damages, uh working with T D M and FEMA with our disaster summary outline, our damage assessments. For twenty-twenty, uh the threshold was raised um up to uh thirty-eight million. So where we stand right now uh is thirty-five million, five hundred and forty, eight hundred and forty-nine and nineteen cents. So we're we're skirting close, but we're not there yet. Some of the the delays that we've encountered is when we submitted our disaster summary outline, specifically Bob Hall Pier. Um, there were some questions about the the structure itself, uh the condition that it was in before Hannah. And we've been working uh with Jacobs Engineering. The request was sent in. Uh, they uh FEMA had requested an additional um letterhead, a a stamped engineer report saying that the pylons or the the support of the pier itself, that the uh seabed level had been reduced, uh lowered, and that that was directly caused by Hurricane Hannah. So Jacobs Engineering quickly put together uh the report they were looking for and submitted on Monday. So that's where we stand right now. Um, per the report, it sounds like it was, in fact, uh Hurricane Hannah that lowered that seabed level, and the entire structure due to that uh would be compromised. We're also uh working with Hagerty. Um, they've been tasked to assist us in in recovery and reimbursement and funding. Uh, we had a great call with them where we talked about other uh funding opportunities. And I know that is something that they're currently working on is is looking for additional funding sources for covering uh any of the Hurricane Hannah uh damage in the event that we are denied by FEMA for public assistance. So as of right now, uh for the unincorporated Oasis, I know I said the overall county uh was at thirty-five point five million. But for unincorporated, unincorporated Oasis County, uh we are at nineteen point six million. Um, that's where we're at as far as as the recovery process goes. Scott Cross has been working very diligently. Uh Jacobs Engineering has put together reports very quickly for us that we've needed. Um, and we're just working with uh FEMA, waiting for that kind of confirmation that they're accepting the report that was submitted on Monday. Um, or if that's gonna change where we stand at all. So that's just a brief update. Did anybody have questions?
Commissioners? I I want you to know Commissioner Chesney and I are gonna be working really closely together. Not not to say that everybody isn't interested in Bob Hall Pier and and its recovery, but we've already had our first initial meeting, and Commissioner, I'll yield to you. You may just want to share, you know, obviously, our commitment to doing everything we can to going through the process.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Judge. Uh, yeah, I think um it's important for the uh public to know that we are working diligently on Bob Hall Pier. Um, um, we spent countless hours on this. I know uh Judge has has spent even more on on it based on her her role as emergency manager. And uh appreciate that. Uh, we met this week to continue to have dialogue on where to go. And and obviously, um it it's it's a, you know, it's a tough task because it's a it's an iconic pier. It's important to to the community. Uh, and we're certainly hoping to get some some federal help on this. And I don't know, you know, we don't know if we're going to yet, but but we've we've got a, um, I think the judge and I worked on, we've got an A, B, C, and D kind of plan to to come up with uh ways to do this. Um, once we get the final report back from the engineers, which we anticipate the end of November. Take it took a little longer, and I think the public needs to be aware, it took a little longer because there was more damage than anticipated and because there was more need to inspect that damage and go deeper into it, if you will, so that we could give the uh needed information to FEMA and anybody else that we're gonna be working with to help us restore that. So um I appreciate your efforts and and um we will uh assure the public, we will continue to be diligent on this. It will not be a fast process. I do not want to lay the expectations out that we're gonna have a brand-new pier overnight. That's a multimillion-dollar pier that you don't just come up with the money to do that overnight. Uh, even if you have a perfect uh situation with FEMA. So it's important for the the public to be uh aware and to be patient. Uh, but know that it is high, high, high on my list, and I know it's high on the judge's list. And then this court has already expressed their commitment to help in in whatever way, and not, they don't know what way yet, but they've expressed the sentiment to to be. So this is, this is a, um, you know, this is a county facility. And just because it's in my precinct doesn't mean um other Commissioners and the judge aren't going to support it, just like there were projects in other Commissioners' Court that, or other Commissioners' precincts that that I support. Because even though we represent an area, you know, we all, I think we all feel up here that we all represent everybody in this county, even though we don't technically get voted on by them. So it's important to know that um if something goes wrong in another Commissioners' precinct, that I'm gonna be there for them. And I know that they're gonna do the same because it's not for me, it's for the people of Oasis County. So
Thank you.
We're working hard, and I just wish it was gonna be faster, and I wish we could do something quicker because there's a lot of revenue that comes from that pier for the county. Um, including not only the rental revenue, but the pier revenue, and not just for the revenue standpoint. It's a very emotional part of Oasis County. People have been on that pier. They've had a lot of good memories over the forty years it's been there, and uh so we're we're gonna work hard.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, and I, we'll be uh visiting, um we'll ask Scott Cross maybe to come to our next meeting and to talk about uh marine debris removal. And uh I think that's kind of where we're headed next. And so lots of good information coming your way. And we just want to encourage everybody uh that um to share with us, you know, your thoughts on it. And we're gonna actually try to work on, Commissioner Chesney and I talked about this, about a a portal where we could create for public comment. You know, I think people want to have input, and there's a way to manage that. And I'm gonna look right at Connie and go, Connie, there's gotta be a way.
It's always good to have an outside perspective. Sometimes we're looking at things too closely, so.
And and the reason I say Connie is because what I'm thinking here is that are what Commissioner Chesney and I talked about is that we want to get comments, but we want to be able to sort them. So we can't just have you just send an email, right? It needs to be such that you answer the boxes so that we can say how many people favor X versus Y. Does that make sense? And maybe it sets up a a a system for all of our projects. If you want to get public input, how how they feel about certain things, we could use this system. I think it's part of the modernization of the court, so. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, Commissioners, on our, on any issues? Okay. Melissa, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
As always, we we do this highlight that we encourage everybody to reach out to us. There was a lot of subject matters that were not covered, from reopening the courts all the way to uh, you know, possible um, trying to think of another good example, um the prioritization, the work that we're doing with the hospital district. So if you have any questions, please reach out to us. And uh we are planning on setting up a workshop. Tyner's working vigorously with our schedule. We just knew with elections, we wanted to wait. So now that elections are over, uh look for something next week uh to reach out to you for your calendars so that you can get a deep dive into any of these areas that you have interest in. And this won't just be for us, it'll be for for the public and or for other electeds. Okay, we're gonna move on then. We'll we'll s- move on to the consent agenda. We did all the resolutions, yep. And now we're on number two, and I'd ask the court to please review items A through U. A through U. Are there any that need to be separated at this time? And then I'll take the motion right afterwards.
H?
Thank you. H?
Judge, A and T.
A and T as in Tom, okay.
I want to pull C.
C?
Number one and C.
Only number one?
Number one and C.
Okay, all right.
Pull G.
G?
P.
Okay, P?
Wait, 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 wait. Tell me G?
G and P, all right.
C, P, it's C, G.
C, G, and P, Commissioner?
Right, and T.
And T. Well, T was pulled already, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that.
Sorry. Okay, anything else? Alrighty, let's let's head into that. Um, so uh let's first get the motion, if you don't mind, to approve the rest of them. Thank you. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post him sign. Okay, how about A, Commissioner Chesney?
Well, and and it's all I, I I really don't want to re- rehash the whole discussion. I just wanted to be able to to on the um, I can't find it, I'm sorry, but it's, there was a, on the check register, I think that's where they also reflected the payment on the the crosswinds deal. Hold it. Yeah, it's on page uh, shoot.
Page two?
Two, yeah, page two of the check register is what it says. I don't know if that's right, because there's twenty pages ahead of the two, so it's on the second group.
Right.
And so I don't know if I needed, I I that's the only one I have objection to, and it's gonna be the same objection on on C that Michigan's always pulled. Not trying to rehash it, just wanted to vote it, vote independently on those.
This is for uh the acceptance into the record of these checks?
And that was, I I again, I don't need to rehash that. I just wanted to be able to go on record and
It's probably the same thing as as uh
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is, basically. It's the same. So I don't know how you to best do that is
Okay.
But it's so it's, it's not the whole check. But it's, so it's, it's not the whole check register, it's just that, and it's just that one on C one too. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. And we actually have, do you have any questions? We have crosswinds here. We actually, or do you just want to?
I just wanted to vote. I mean, I'm, I, I don't really, I don't want to.
I think that was tabled.
Yeah, we tabled it.
I think when you left.
Yeah, because we didn't want to.
Tabled when you weren't here.
Right, right.
Because you are here.
Right.
And we need to bring it back up, I guess, for action, right? We didn't take any action on it.
Right.
Yeah, we tabled that in the last meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right.
So I don't know what we have to do on the check register because, because it says authorize, there's, like, there's two of them, right? I don't really, A says authorized payment of bills, and then C says authorization payment of bills, but there's kind of the same bills on A and C. So I don't, I don't really.
Dale?
C is your special motions that require action by the court because they're under, either under a contract or under a, a special project that we have. So that's why we consider it called a special motions. So your letter A is for your regular bills, so that it comes through as an invoice. So it appears the same, however, but we'll see requires that it is because of a contract or a special project.
All, all I wanted to do is pull that one out and vote differently. So I guess, I don't know how to do that. I, I don't want, I'm not trying to vote against every one of the check registers or, I guess I, I need to make a motion to not.
Just make a motion and.
Yeah, I'll make a motion not to pay that. I don't, I don't know how else to say that.
Right. And they're already paid, is that correct?
That's correct.
They're already paid. So it's just a, it's a reading into the record, the acceptance of that. But you can vote against that?
Let me, have, let me ask a question to Dale. If we table an item with an amount, the table is for no action, right?
Well, if you remember and you look at the agenda item that was on last court, the, the agenda item said that the check was already dispersed.
The first two checks, but that the whole amount was already dispersed?
Whole amount was already dispersed, according to what was listed on it, that, under the authority of early release signed by the judge.
Okay, I just.
So the funds have already been released and already been, been paid.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what I'd like to have, if it has been done that way. I'd just like to have an itemized statement.
Sure.
Of everything that was spent from who and who and who made what and.
Sure.
The copies of the invoices and from the eight vendors and all that.
Sure. Let's get that, let's get that to Commissioner. And also, I believe there is a, a presentation that Tyner, that actually showcases all of that information that we can get to you so you can get it to the court.
There was one attached to this, but it wasn't a complete itemized statement.
Yeah, it just was a general, but.
Can we get that Tyner? I know that crosswinds did prepare a, a presentation for that purpose that shows all the vendors that were utilized, both, both in, you know.
What was paid to crosswinds and what?
Right, they, they were the umbrella, but they have all the subcontractor, all the media outlets and all of that. And we can, we can accept that presentation into the court even today if you'll get it from them.
And I guess.
The truth of the matter is, is you didn't have to bring this to the court. It's already been paid, so it's, item's really mute. I mean, it's, it's been done so we can rehash it all day and waste time, but it's been done.
Right. And I don't, and again, I'm going to say, I don't know why we, if, if, if the judge gets an opinion that she can do this on her own, which she got, I don't know why we keep bringing this stuff to the court.
I agree.
I get it's for transparency, I'm okay with that part of it, but I, maybe it shouldn't be a vote, maybe it should just be like a presentation. Because I, I hate wasting the court's time on things, but if I've got to vote on something, then I've got to vote against this. But I don't really, I, I'm not trying to like pick a fight on anything, I just wish we could do this differently. If these are, I, I just.
Well, I think we asked to do it differently, and I thought we did. I thought this is what, this is what we did, is to do it differently.
But it still, it still makes us vote, because that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to avoid.
Okay.
I get you're transparent, I, I get you're trying to be transparent, I appreciate that Judge. Maybe we should make them just as presentations that says.
Isn't that what we said last time? We wanted the wording to be changed just so that.
Right.
The public understands, we understand.
Yeah.
It's about transparency, but there doesn't really require a vote.
Right.
So we could just receive it and then just.
Can we just pull it out, Judge, whatever? I'm, I, that was my request the last time, I'm happy to do that. I mean, that's completely fine.
Can we just, can we just pull them out? Could we just, could we motion, could we just make a motion to, to pull them out? They've already been done, I don't want to rehash the discussion.
Or you can, or you can make a motion to, to not be in favor of it.
Your way.
That's fine too.
Whatever.
Either way, you can, it's, it's up, it's up to the court.
But I, but I, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to sever the ones that we shouldn't have to vote on, because I'm not trying to, because I don't want to vote against all the rest of the bills or all the rest of the special motions. I just want to be able to.
Well, I think you're not voting for it, you're just voting, you're just voting that they got paid. It's like a ministerial act, but.
Right, but I, that's.
However you want to make your motion.
I don't want to vote that.
How about this? How about if I make the motion to.
Sever it?
To authorize the payment of the bills on A with the contingency that the court documents that one of them has already been paid. You're not voting to pay them.
I would just, or just if you wouldn't mind expanding that Judge, that'd be, that's a great track, is just say, if we could just take those out. I mean, we, if we don't have to authorize them, then why do we have to authorize? I mean, I don't want to vote on something that, I don't want to, I don't.
I'll just look for Dale for, you know, it's Dale's, I, I try to follow the process that we do every time. I'm happy to, to yield to Dale if he wants to do something differently.
Because the, the law requires us to provide a listing of every transaction to the court, so it's still required that y'all see the information. But there are procedures that have been set up by the court that, that given a, a type of an invoice, there is a, a requirement sometimes of early release. And we have, and the, and the court's given us authority that the judge can authorize an early release, and sometimes that happens, but we still have to record it as a dispersment.
Right.
So if you're saying we have to, then I would just make a motion to sever these two items out of A and C and, and vote on those separately. That would be my motion, just to move them, just.
Dale, can you just make the motion that we approve all items except for the crosswinds? Because we, with something that the judge has the authority to have already had those paid and they're just listed just like that, and then you don't even have to pull it.
Right. And, and just so the court is aware.
That's fine.
We do this at least a thousand times on other items.
I know.
And this is just being selectively chosen because of a disagreement, which is, which is respected. But I just want you to know that I would hope that there would be consistency. You know, the local disaster orders really are a way for us to make sure that, you know, we can get things done. So there's, you're going to see this from time to time. There's other situations that, whether it's Plexiglas or, or whatever, and this, this is the process that we do. And it doesn't mean that you are authorizing the process, it just means that we're keeping to the same consistency that we do all the time. I just want you to, to know that.
I agree, it's just, I don't want to be on record voting for it, so.
I think you've got it.
I, I seconded the motion.
Okay, you got it.
What was the motion that she made? I didn't.
Basically, that we approve the check register and remove the crosswinds, knowing that the judge, this is in here just for a, for a record, knowing that the judge had the authority to do that.
Okay, so the motion.
And I've got a motion.
To basically remove the crosswinds from the check register and from approval by the court.
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'll second that as long as that's very clear.
I think it did.
Oh, sorry, my bad, John seconded. Okay, is that clear for, please make sure that's clear.
Yeah, because we wouldn't want anyone to be confused on that. Okay, motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, I've got, I'm sorry, one nay.
I'm just going to abstain, because I, I just, I really don't know, but I mean, I think the motion's.
Well, wasn't that your motion?
No, I don't, tell me, read, can you read back the motion to me?
This is.
Can you read back the motion? I'm sorry, just to make sure.
Approve the check register and remove crosswinds from the register.
Okay, that's fine. I'll vote for that, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So we've got the, the motion and we've cleared that. Let's go to item number G. G, please.
Yeah, I wanted just a kind of a clarification on that to see, and I went back and looked at it again. I think we do this every year, I guess, the same thing. Is this exactly the same thing that we do every year, not, nothing different? You know.
The only difference is the amount. And so if you look at exhibit.
Well, I had a question on the amount, because on the amount, it shows four hundred or four hundred and eight thousand or something like, but it says out of three hundred, out of three thousand and twenty. So I don't know, maybe it's, is that a typo or what?
What, what, what are you looking at?
Let me do the backup.
Because the amount that the county is going to pay, and that's on the exhibit A, page number two on the top, they budgeted forty-nine thousand five hundred. That's how much the county's going to pay, Noasis County.
I think that, you know, we're going to enter that in the record. See, if you go back and, and the county share is six hundred and eight thousand, and it says nineteen percent of three thousand two hundred. That cannot, that can't be right. I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the. Right here, that's what I'm looking at, on the.
At the AIS or what?
I don't know who submitted this, Tyner, I guess. Who submitted this?
I'm sorry?
Did you submit this? Who submitted this?
I think the county attorney's office actually submitted that item.
I don't have.
I have a question, I just have a question on the, on the amount. I'll make sure, I don't want to go to record showing that we took money from some, and not enough money from, you know, because it shows here.
What you're approving is interlocal.
But not the, but the, not the amount?
The amount in here.
What I'm saying, the amount in here.
But the amount in the contract is forty-nine thousand five, I mean, forty-nine thousand five hundred.
So what's this county share is six hundred and eight thousand?
That's a total amount of both Aransas and, and Noasis County and St. Pat.
Ninety percent, it says ninety percent of three thousand two hundred. So how can that be out of three thousand two hundred? Is that three million maybe?
Let me see, I don't have that.
Tyner, want to give it to? No. I need to look before we go in the record showing.
Was he looking at?
I don't know.
Commissioner.
I don't know.
You're, you're looking at the metro call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My bad, my bad, my bad.
Yeah, the, the share for Noasis County is forty-nine thousand five hundred.
I'm okay with that one. I went back to get it up. Thank you very much, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Will you make a motion in that case?
Go move.
And a second from Commissioner Modas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay. And, and then we've got GeoFill as H. Commissioner Modas?
Yes, thank you Judge. Obviously, I mean, we got the update earlier, and we're just talking, you know, about, about peers and all that. And I just wanted just to look at the amount. So it's, for clarification, we're using GeoFill, but Hanson is, I guess, the, the engineer on this? But it's through, it's through GeoFill.
So that, the, yes, so the GeoFill's our construction through the RFP, Michael can identify, they were the lowest bid.
Right.
And Hanson did the work to get the severance from US Fish and Wildlife. So their work was already done, we already paid them before.
We already paid them.
Yeah. And, and the reason is, if you'll recall, that Hanson did the, the original observation deck. So we basically did a site change, and they upgraded the same plans for a new site. They did charge us for the, the new plans at the new site, but it was substantially the same plans as before.
Right. All right. So that's going to be a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay. And now we've got a P, letter P, and that was Commissioner Gonzalez, on the Homeland Security Grants for Local Border Security Program for FY twenty-one.
Yeah. Is that grant we had already, or is it something?
We're accepting this grant. This is an award that's come in, and we're accepting it.
But do we already have that grant already in place or not? I mean, one of those grants, do we have a grant?
Maria can answer your question. Go ahead Maria.
Hi Commissioner, this is a continuation grant. This is the second year that the district attorney's office received this grant award from, for overtime for interdiction activities. In the past, I know the sheriff's office was a recipient and Constable Precinct Five.
And this is for who?
This is for the district attorney's office.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you Maria, appreciate it.
Okay.
Go move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay. Anyway, let's see, we've got the next one, which is T. And this is actual acceptance of the grant award for Center for Tech and Civic Life. And again, the money has been deposited, and this is the ratification. And Commissioner Gonzalez, you pulled this one.
I think I did.
I'm sorry Chesney.
That's okay. Same, same thing, not trying to rehash, just, I think I'm on record for how I think we should have used it, I just think.
Well, this is the ratification of the money. Are, are you, are you on record that you don't want to accept the grant? That's free money?
I'm on record of, I just want to, I don't, I don't know what to do with that, what to do with it. Because certainly, I don't have any problem accepting the grant. But how the grant is used is the problem. So I guess I just wanted to be able to vote individually. And I'll probably, I don't know if I'll abstain or, you know, I just wanted to vote.
Just want to be able to?
Yeah.
Poke one more time?
No.
Okay.
All right. Well, I think, oh, thank you so much.
I don't know that it was really a COVID-19 grant. I mean, I never saw that title on there.
Okay, well, that's, that's very helpful. Because it is actually a COVID-19 grant. If you'll Google Center for Tech and Civic Life, at the very top, that's exactly how it's styled. And because I spoke with the Center for Tech and Civic Life myself and, and their counsel, that's exactly how they intended it. And, um, and of course, what's wonderful about this grant is that not only is it not taxpayer money, but the great thing about the grant is that it allows for a match for $65,000 for our HAVA grant, our Help America Vote Act grant. So that part is great. And then when you think about the opportunity, um, for the surge, to combat the surge that's happening all over our state, this was a really very quick and efficient way to be able to address the needs of voter safety. And we did not have any voter safety opportunities, uh, other than these that were on paid media or, um, digital media, billboards. And public health was, um, really wonderful, from Dr. Dante Gonzalez to Dr. Ramash Grandjuni and Doc, and Annette Rodriguez, the director, who all used these funds to be able to cut ads to really emphasize voter safety. And so at all polling locations, the 84 that we had yesterday and the 25 that we had at voting centers, this was our only real presence for voter safety. So I really, um, I want to make sure that everybody knows that this is non-taxpayer money. It's free money. And, uh, it's money that, uh, the county, uh, has had direct deposited. And it, and it was not only a COVID-19 response, but I think it's important that the commissioners know and the public know that the, the group, the 501(c)(3) organization, uh, not only understood how the funds were being used, but approved of the way the funds were being used. And understood that these funds, uh, were going to be used in a COVID-19 response, uh, for voter safety. So I think that's really important and would want you to know that. And again.
Well, if we don't accept this grant, the county's going to be on the hook for the money that's been spent. Is that correct?
Well, grant's already been accepted, I just don't want to be on record.
But that's what we're voting for, to accept it.
Yeah, that's, and that's really important, that the, the idea here is that, um, is that this is, it's really important to read the agenda items and to understand what their purpose is. And I think that, um, it's good to go onto record to say you didn't agree. And I think that's been mentioned probably no less than 10 times by you. But the purpose of this is to ratify the acceptance of the grant award. The money is free money that has come in, that we used in an appropriate way according to the grantors. The grantors are thrilled with how we use these dollars. And they were not only for the exact purpose that the organization set it up for, but they were used in a way that promoted voter safety. And we got lots of great support and, uh, and commentary as a result. And in fact, I received the only, um, uh, I just received here a copy, but we'll get you, this was the copy that I asked Tyner, uh, I mean, to be sent to Tyner. But we'll get this to you guys because, uh, we've already promised that you would see the whole budget invoices. Um, this is the timeline. Um, we got a nice comment from a local business who was very pleased with us, um, with regards to all the signs which were printed here locally. And, uh, all the creative which was produced here locally. All the media outlets which was used locally. And of course, the opportunity to have six 30-second spots, three 15-second spots, three audio commercials in Spanish versions. And, um, I think that one thing is nice is for the runoff. I think it's important to know that we own all the assets that this creative created. So you've got, this campaign has logos, domains, meaning websites, right? And all of that is now owned by the county. And so from year to year, you'll be able to enhance, um, that particular platform. And you can utilize it, of course, in the runoff. But we can also use, utilize it year after year. So it's really good because you can, it, it can change reflecting on whatever the guidelines are at the time. But, um.
Judge, and I sent an email yesterday and I don't, maybe Tyner, I wanted to ask you because I don't know if you miswrote this. Because I had expressed these concerns to, to Tyner yesterday as to why, because I was trying to not have this, have to have this discussion again because I'm really not trying to poke or I'd be saying a lot more. But it says in Tyner's email, and it's not you Judge, it's Tyner saying, "I just don't think we could make the case applying for the grant was under the emergency powers." I don't know if you, I don't know if you miswrote that, but because that didn't make sense to me. You said that the judge did it under emergency powers and then you said, "I just don't think," so that's why I hope, that's why we treated the contract. You might want to go read that email. That may have just been a typo.
I'm sorry if you're confused. The court, um, the court ratified submission of the grant application on October 7th. That was on the consent agenda. Talked to Maria yesterday. The crosswinds agreement was entered into under the judge's emergency powers to get moving. Because we learned that we got the grant. And the judge, you know, wanted to move quickly. Maria is the one that elect, or grants electronically applied for the grant in the name of the county, not the judge. So that's why Maria, I talked to her yesterday, felt compelled that since those actions were on behalf of the county, that the county was applying for the grant, that, that that's why they go on the agenda. That's, that's what I meant to say.
Well, the most important thing is that, again.
If we already, if we did it back on October 7th, then.
Yeah, on October 7th.
October 7th, the court ratified submission of the application.
And then this is, all you're doing is accepting free money. This is, it's, it's kind of odd to me that there is such a controversy over accepting free money that was used for a great purpose, which was voter safety. And it was not going to be used in any other way because there was a refusal to do so. So we used it, and the timeline is very, um, important here because we had already started the early vote. There wasn't going to be an opportunity for future, uh, use. But I understand that it's a fun thing to be able to say, um, that, you know, I, I think it's become, uh, this was a national political issue. And that's why I think it's, it's come up here. It's, it's yet one more way that, unfortunately, we're, we, we, as they say, we deviate. But the most important thing to know is that we did as a court on October 7th, agree to submit this grant. And my name is on it. And in fact, if you look at the grant submission, I worked with Natalie on that particular day. And I talked to Center for Tech and Civic Life. And before we entered into any contracts, before we entered into any arrangements, we not only spoke to the grantors at Center for Tech and Civic Life, we spoke to the attorneys. Again, everything was done not only properly, but in a great way to be able to benefit voter safety. And it's very odd and strange and not a part of our civil, uh, civility to argue about a good project for a good purpose that reached so many people at a time when Texas is surging in COVID-19 and we allowed public health to take the lead. If you want to be against that, go right ahead. But there's nothing that we've done here that's really inappropriate.
I've really sat here and tried not to say anything, but you keep bringing it up and say, I'm poking at it and it.
Well, it's a ratification of the money, sir.
Okay, but I'm going to respond and say clearly, I think it is a, I have no problem accepting grant money from this organization. My problem is how it was spent, how it was used, how it was done, that the court wasn't involved in the selection of crosswinds, when that is the problem that I have. I am fine with taking the money. Again, I wasn't going to do all this, I was just going to try here and sit over here and maybe abstain or maybe.
Can I give you a discussion? Can you do the motion so that we can get the motion though?
Hold on, let me just continue to finish my train of thought. And then you can do what you need to do because you, you did yours. So the civil discourse here is, uh, it is very, it is very civil. It is, it is very fine to say, fine, let's take the money. But I'm, I'm opposed to it because I don't believe it was spent correctly. I don't believe the court was involved as it should have been with the selection of crosswind. I believe the money could have been done in a different way. And so that is the civil discourse. The disagreement is not overtaking the money or applying for a grant. And that needs to be clear. It is over how the grant was spent and the court's lack of involvement. And the fact that it was given to an out-of-town company with local participation of which I participate, or appreciate and have acknowledged repeatedly, but do not believe it should have been awarded to crosswinds. That is the disagreement. Didn't plan to say all that, but since, since you articulated your position again, I'm articulating mine. I only pulled it so that I could either abstain or just hope no. And I really didn't plan to do all this. That's why I sent the email yesterday to Tyner saying, hey, I really don't want to have this discussion again, but you keep bringing it out. And that's fine. And I'm not being critical and I'm not mad and.
Actually, it's just a ratification.
I don't, right, but I don't want to sit here and, and, and listen to that one side and make it sound like people are fighting over taking good free money for safety. That's not the fight. The fight is how it was spent, who it was spent on, and that the court, in my opinion, was not involved. So that's all I have to say about it. I, I'll.
Right.
It's, someone can make a motion and we'll move forward.
Right, well.
I'm making a motion to accept the grant.
Clear. Second.
I had a one thing on discussion. When you keep saying free money, free money, every grant we get is not free money. I mean, when we get a grant, to me, once we get a grant, we get money, it belongs to the county. It belongs, it belongs to, to the county, I think. Because nothing's free. I mean, it's not, it's not like it's a free money, do as you wish. Because every grant we get, we could say it's a free money. So we could use it, you know, probably any way we want to. So I'm just, you know, I get, I get confused when we say it, free money, you know, and, and it's a, it's a grant to be used in Nueces County. So that's, you know, just, just an issue that I have is, you know, the wording of free money. So, um, but, you know, that's because I'm, I'm just, this is, I thought any money that comes to Nueces County belongs to the people, you know. It's, it's, we're here to serve the people. And to me, it belongs to the taxpayers. Once we get that money, we received it, it belongs, uh, goes in our budget and belongs to the taxpayers. I mean, that's what I, that's my, my observation, my thing, I don't know. But anyway, that's my discussion, there's motion.
Thank you. Thank you, and we appreciate, um, your viewpoint very much. And, um, the one thing that I wanted to, um, echo here is that, um, you mentioned something I think really important, which is that, um, whether it should have come to court or not, we have, um, a well-established policy with COVID-19 security, I'm sorry, you know, COVID-19 security slash safety, uh, protocol. And that comes directly from the disaster declaration under the local government code. And we've done this dozens and dozens of times because that's what an emergency does. It allows for emergency management to, uh, bypass the normal procurement methods. And the reason is, is because it's an emergency, there's an urgency. And that's why it was done here. And if we had had time, had this grant had come earlier, we would have had that opportunity. But that opportunity did not present itself. In fact, we were not able to move on the expenditures of the dollars until it was for, um, during that first day of the early vote. So I just want you to know that you're, there is always a good opportunity to, to do what we call the normal methods of procurement. But it just did not allow for itself to be here at this time. And, um, and I hope that, you know, we, we get a chance to be out of this disaster very, very soon. Because then we won't have to worry about, um, making those types of emergency decisions. But those were the decisions that were made in order to utilize the grant. You can't really utilize a grant for voter safety if you're already in the middle of your election. So I think that, um, having heard the motion and the second and all of the good discussion, we'll go ahead and move forward. But again, the motion is for the ratification of the grant.
And Judge, if I, if I may comment, please. Um, as directed by the court last time, me and my office made an effort to look at every ratification item to see which ones would qualify for stating receive into the record. My off, uh, Teresa asked me, what about this one? And I said, in my mind, the county applied for that grant. They authorized, uh, they ratified submission of the application. We brought crosswinds to court last time. I talked to Maria yesterday. This probably should have been on last court as well, but it didn't make it, it made it on this court. But again, um, maybe it's a question for the county attorney. Um, I can see you executing the crosswinds contract, uh, on an emergency basis. But when my office asked me, what about this one? I said, the county applied for the grant. The county is getting the money. And, and in my mind, it was not an item just to receive into the record.
Right. And that's why we bring these here. We're trying to do it the right way. So I appreciate Tyner's office being, as like I said, we're process people. We just like doing it the right way. And we know that it might make some people uncomfortable, but we think that is, this is the right way to do it. We, we've got the money in the account. We're going to be able to do good things with it. And, um, and so at any rate, I think there's been sufficient discussion. But thank you Tyner, because I think it's a good clarification. And, uh, but we will honor the court's request about, uh, receiving into the record where it's appropriate. We heard you all the last time. And we're going to make sure that wherever that's appropriate. But in this case, we wanted to bring it for ratification. So I'm sorry it didn't work out the other way because we really did listen. But I do yield to court administration. It just didn't work out. So, okay. All those in favor of the ratification of the acceptance of the grant? Again, that's all this is, is accepting the money into the record. Uh, I'm sorry, into the treasury. Uh, except, um, uh, signify by saying aye. Aye.
I'm going to abstain Judge because.
Abstain, okay. One abstention for the clerk.
I don't mind the grant, the money, like, uh, but I do, I don't like the way it was done. So I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay, thank you Commissioner.
Abstain for the same reasons as articulated earlier. Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, so we're going to move on. I think there was one more. Uh, double, let me double check. That was it, there was you, but it didn't have, it didn't have a problem. Okay. Um, on the regular agenda item, we have a report now from Bank of America. And this is on our ABM Energy Savings Performance Contract. It's related, of course, to the CIP. Is there an opportunity, uh, to have someone on the line?
Judge, it's, uh, Carrie, our, um, law, uh, the lawyer to report to the court.
All right, sounds good. And Carrie, um, good morning. Give us a second to set you up here. And, um, you're going to give us a, a 30,000-foot overview of the highlights. We know, we know you know a lot more about it, but we're looking for the, the highlights as, as we've already had multiple discussions about this particular item.
Yes, good morning, County Judge, County Commissioners.
Good morning.
It was a wild night last night, and so I'm glad we're on to, uh, the day after election. But, um, last week, on Thursday, we closed the financing, one, uh, arm of the financing transaction for your energy savings contract, uh, where we borrowed money, um, to implement, uh, a certain portion of your, uh, equipment purchases with ABM. Um, we did fund on Thursday morning and closed on the contract. The funds are being held by an escrow agent on behalf of the county. So it's county's funds is being held in a bank account. Uh, and will be applied to the purchase of the personal property under your energy efficiency or energy savings contract. Um, we're just cleaning up a couple of items that the bank has requested, um, before releasing the funds for actual expenditure. Um, they were looking for, uh, a rider so that they, you know, this is, the property is covered by, uh, a UCC or a lien on the property. So they needed a rider from your, um, just to make sure that they were covered on the, uh, property placed into, uh, service. And then, um, we needed to, uh, clean up one thing on, uh, the payment schedule. So all that's been worked on and, and I'll leave it to Tyner to kind of update you on where we are in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We like that guy.
Yeah, that's great. Tyner, um, is not here with us, but, um, Carrie, I think, I think we're good. Does anyone have any questions for Carrie?
Go move.
Okay. All right. Um, we are, again, grateful for all the, the service. There was a lot of background, um, with regards to this particular agreement. And so from the county attorney's office all the way to Blakely Fernandez's office. And I just want to do a little shout out to Bracewell there because you've got to have all your experts in the room to make sure that the negotiations, um, run exactly the way that the court intended them to. So at any rate, we're, we're grateful. Um, this is going to make a major impact in our capital improvement program. And it all starts with the opportunity to have the financing, um, at a good rate and with terms that the county can accept. So I think Carrie, you would agree that we have a very strong contract and a very good meeting of the minds on that.
I do agree.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, it's just a receiver report, there's no action needed. I just wanted to make sure Tyner's out of the room, but he's coming back.
Okay.
Carrie, just hang on for a second. Tyner, was there anything that you needed to end with, with regards to?
No, I just wanted to report to the court that we actually, uh, received the money into escrow and, uh, you know, we're, uh, down the road of, uh, finalizing everything.
Okay, great. And as a result of that, Carrie, we've got a notice to proceed. So that makes a big difference, you know, is being able to move from your part to actually getting things done. As we say, we wanted to order things, get, get projects moving. We can't do it until you give us the go-ahead. So, thank you.
So it's a go.
So we're all good then, Tyner?
Yes Judge.
All right, Carrie. Thank Blakely, uh, and thank you, uh, on behalf of Bracewell for making sure all of our ayes were dotted.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Judge, uh, I would also at this point.
Hold on here.
I'd also at this point would like to thank, um, Carlisle Insurance who, uh, helped us obtain some of the information we needed for this. Uh, also want to thank, uh, ABM, who was tasked with getting some, uh, records together for this process. So, uh, Mike and Joel did a good job of, of helping out Carrie and giving him the information. And then Lisa Tames at Bank of America, uh, was kind of, uh, overarching umbrella to, uh, make sure that everything was done, that everybody was on task. And she kept us, uh, up to date with emails and information all along the way to make sure, uh, that everybody had what was needed. And the folks at Bracewell just did a stellar job. And definitely want to thank, uh, each and every one of them, especially Carrie, who, who led their efforts for us in, uh, making this historic, um, uh, loan, uh, come through for us for the energy savings contract.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I, I don't know if, if, uh, we really have had, let it sink in how important it is for our jail and annex and juvenile and just everything. I mean, I know commissioners have been wanting all of these upgrades and to actually get them, it's almost surreal. So Carrie, thank you.
Also received the, uh, closing, uh, cost information from, uh, Stradionosa. I'll be working with Michael, uh, to get it paid correctly. Normally it was paid through, uh, the, the proceeds. This year, we did this one separately, so we'll, we'll bring this to, to you at a later time.
Okay, thanks. Thanks again, appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on then. Uh, you're off the hook, Carrie, thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the amendment. Um, and I actually have some papers that were delivered. So I've got a little bit of a summary in front of me that I just don't know if everybody has all of these papers. Does everybody have all of the interlocal agreement, um, data that was provided for our next agenda item? Yes? Okay, good. So I, I was just looking that over and, but on the phone with us is Peter Collins to assist. But let me read out the, um, item and then we can move right into Peter or Tyner. You could tee it up if you'd like. But this is the amendment to the interlocal with City of Corpus Christi related to MetroCom, uh, consult, which is our consolidated emergency dispatch and 911 center. And here's the, the big ask today. It's a P-25 radio system upgrade and the interlocal agreement that goes along with it with RTA and the City of Corpus Christi. So, um, we have action to take. And there's actually, um, some important, very important information, uh, with regards to, to really how we've modernized MetroCom. This, this really is one of the most important functions for our county. but we hadn't really, we hadn't been very good housekeepers in a long, long time, I think is probably the best way to say it. And we've been able to work with our partners at the city. And we have a very modern new agreement. And we have unfortunately some dollars that need to be expended. So Peter, do you want to kind of give us an overview?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I hope everybody's doing well. What brought about the change to modernize it was the judge is actually spearheaded by requesting a review committee to look at the interlocal that was established years ago. So the review committee consisted of the sheriff, Tyner, Kathy, the police chief, our budget person, Eddie, and then also Pat Eldredge. And I was requested if I would chair the committee. We went through the entire interlocal line by line. And there's a couple of things I'd like to highlight as far as some of the improvements that have been made. One of the largest ones is, this is an operational center. MetroCom, the main mission of MetroCom is to deliver public safety services as quick as possible. That when somebody calls 911, the call's answered. And then whatever public safety service that needs to be dispatched and arrive on scene, it happens as quick as possible for a person in need. So we stay focused on the mission. And as far as I want to say before I start into it, a little bit more, the team worked very, very well together. We weren't county staff, we weren't city staff, we were MetroCom. And we wanted to do the best for, for the citizens. So one of the highlights that we noticed, one of the things that we'll point out, was the operation committee. The operation committee was, was actually made up of individuals that really weren't in touch with the operations who agreed that they need to be in order to oversee operations for MetroCom. So we changed that as far as who are assigned to it. So for example, the sheriff can assign the, an operations person to the MetroCom Operation Committee. The police chief can do the same. The county judge can do it. And also the city, city manager can assign team members. But they're all operational based. So this way you can deal with operational needs of MetroCom and keep a pulse on MetroCom's performance. The other thing that we actually did do, we did the audit. And I came before and briefed a little bit about the MetroCom interlocal. We did an audit and we baseline that. We have a strong foundation. There were no findings. So that was, that was really good news. And then you have the board. The board consists of the judge and the mayor. One of the things that we did discuss, if there was an impasse, what do we do about it? The board will just send it back to the operations committee. And the operations committee will come up with a solution and represent it to the board. The board also selects the chair of the operations committee. So that's going to be one of the functions as soon as the interlocal gets passed with the county. And then, and then also with the city, then we can have a meeting to go ahead and get the operations committee in place. But one of the largest things was, how do you break up costs that's fair and equitable? So we came up with a formula that we consider a living formula. Because the other one stayed around for probably 10-plus years. But we looked at it and we addressed the overhead. We're partners. And the thing is, we have to stress that we are partners. We're running operations for MetroCom, what everybody depends on. So that's a 50/50% partnership there. But we took the overhead, but then we say, well, we, the city and the county doesn't use the same amount of resources. So then we decide to do, do, add to the formula, the population. So the city's 90% and the county's 10%. Then we also thought, say, well, what about the incidences that go through MetroCom? So we did the analysis of that. The incidences, 89% is the city, 11% is the county. And by doing that, adding all three values up together, divide by three, gave us percentage breakdown, which turned out to be 76% the city, 24% the county. So we're doing a step increase with the county. This year is 23%, next year is 24%. But we recalculate this formula every two years. So the census will be coming out. As the city grows, our incidences will increase, the counties will decrease. So this, this formula here should last quite a while to adjust to the call of service and the amount of resources that are being used by either the county and the city in their partnership with MetroCom. This kind of is a very brief overview on it. But we're also looking at as far as some of our 911 fees. And maybe the judge wants to follow up more on the 911 fees with everybody?
Yes, sir, I will. So basically, oh, hi Kathy. Welcome. And Kathy has also been working with us on, on this issue. But basically, for years now, we have not been receiving, Kathy, our 911 wireless wireline fees. And there is a, I guess, an audit that we're really looking into with regards to the state 911 and its relationship on how it delivers our dollars to the COG. And then the COG, of course, then distributes to the PSAPS. And so we have not been in that role for, since 2000, do you remember, 10?
10.
2010. And so we've, we've begun the dialogue with the state to figure out how we can try to find our way home, so to speak, so that we can start receiving our fair share of, of these, of these fees. And so Kathy, I'm going to let you, looks like you're ready on mark to, to also give some background here. But the bottom line is, is this interlocal agreement is being recommended by you. You've been working on this under our direction for, gosh, months and months. This is at least a year in the making.
Yes, ma'am, as well as Tyner Little and Sheriff Hooper.
Right. And you in our committee, this all started when we said we need to have a MetroCom meeting. And just so you guys know, the MetroCom board is the mayor of Corpus Christi, Joe McCombe and myself. And because it sort of stayed dormant for so long, we had not been keeping the agreement, we had not been keeping to the letter of our agreements. And so we modernized through the help of our committees. And Sheriff Hooper and Kathy have represented Nuances County in that endeavor. And I think, Kathy, we're doing very well now in the modernization of our documents. And what would you say to the court about this interlocal agreement?
This interlocal agreement brings several things to the table. It also gives us a fund that's directly related to MetroCom. It's a, it's a, and it's already been created. It's a CIP, so therefore, any additional funds that are left over and anything that we may have paid goes into a MetroCom fund where previously, before this contract was written, would go into the general fund for Corpus Christi. So it does create that. It also allows us an audit every two years of MetroCom. It also creates a proper operational committee and they do meet every two months. And they are watching the, the, the drop-off rates, the flow, how, how we are doing, how well MetroCom is doing its job. So it really does provide for a lot of transparency that was not there before.
And in fact, Kathy, until you and I really started making this, I have a little pet project, we didn't even have a detailed budget. We did not have the type of accounting that any organization, particularly one as important as MetroCom, should have. And so I want to commend you all because thanks to working with the city and MetroCom, we have a really detailed budget for the first time in over a decade. Is that correct?
Probably 20 years.
20 years, okay. And so again, it is very good. And we're, now let me tell you a little something that sometimes when you look, you realize, oops, we owe a little bit more. So I don't know if we want to delve into that, but we have had to change because we looked. But it, it inures to our favor if, if the numbers, now we have a framework, right? To be able to base the dollars that are fair for us to be able to contribute.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Because this new framework allows, as the population increases in the City of Corpus Christi, then they have a greater responsibility. As our population perhaps lowers in the county, then the county has less responsibility as far as payment goes. This also speaks to a specific area. We have had requests from Bishop Aguadose Driscoll to pursue dispatch services through MetroCom. And the fees that have been presented to them in the past have not been what they would deem appropriate based on their size and scope as smaller towns. So this new contract does allow the committee to revisit that and provide a reasonable reimbursement for those entities.
And in fact, they were being fundamentally unfair
That's correct.
to those small towns. So I just want you to know, I mean, in the middle of all the things that we're working on in emergency management, I'm so proud of the fact that we've been able to deliver on some of our promises from last year, which was modernize MetroCom, re-strike a balance that's fair and equitable for all parties, and work with our partners at the City of Corpus Christi to make sure that, that we are, as they say, all in this together with the right allocations. But thanks to Peter Collins and the city, we've been able to go work with, with the, with the state agency to try to figure out if we can bring in more money. And we may not be able to, but we have at least started the inquiry. And Kathy's helped bring all of this together.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, so there's some action items here, right Kathy? And you want to just remind the court so we can make here maybe for a motion? Well, actually, is there any questions that you all have of Kathy? There's definitely big dollars here, guys, that you need to sort of look at. Because upgrading the P-25 system is a cost of at least $600,000. Nobody's brought that up. I'm always amazed what gets people's attention. I don't know about you, but that one got mine.
I thought I heard you, Judge. That was the wrong one. $608,000.
Yeah, $608,000. And we don't have a funding source for it. Well, actually, we do, but you haven't asked yet. So do you want to ask about it, Commissioner Gonzalez?
I'll ask a question when he comes up.
Well, right now. Go ahead.
Yeah. So first of all, I think in the paper here it says $608,000. That was out of $3,200, about, should be $3 million, right, I think? $3 million? It says $3,200 here, but what's your funding source? I mean, I don't know where.
We are using CO 2019, 2019 money. And the reimbursements were going to be due in three installments. The third quarter and the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2021. And then the first quarter of fiscal year 2122.
And that's for your consideration. That's for your consideration.
That's going to be for the 200,000, 2,666, four times, right? I mean, that's going to be our amount?
It's only $608,000. So it's three, three payments.
Three payments, all of those totals. Well, all of those total is $608,000.
Right. And the, and the funding source that, that I've recommended for, for this is CO 2019. So this is a monster, you know, and it has to be done. It's not even like it, you don't have a choice, but.
MetroCom's important. I gotta, you gotta, you gotta have that.
Right. And these are the types of upgrades.
It's been for me.
Yeah.
And if you talk to the sheriff's department, this is a radio upgrade that's really, really needed.
Constables, everybody.
It, it falls into the category of one more thing that somehow has been pushed, pushed into the neglect category and we're having to deal with all of it. And so I'm ever grateful that this court had the foresight to have that CO. I mean, think about what it's been able to do for us. Do you remember it's also paying for $2 million worth of upgrades to our, to our overall radio system? So, you know, this is different.
May I ask something, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Yes, but just to recap, we have two sides to the radio project. One are the radios themselves, which we, which the county has purchased for the P-25 standard. Our radio infrastructure, which are the towers, repeaters, containers, that all needs to be upgraded to P-25. The reason why we're upgrading the system is because we're on an old system called EDAX. It is at the end of the year. Officially, it's at the end of life. But we will continue to have support from the vendor as we make this transition. So the project itself is 3.2 million. Harris Radio actually gave an in-kind contribution of about $2.3 million in equipment. We were already able to install some of the equipment. We upgraded the core switch in, for the radio system. That's P-25, the latest version. But also for the first time here, we actually have a backup core switch. The radio system never had a backup switch before. And that's already been placed out of the region and it runs concurrently with the switch here. So if something happens, we can continue to run our radio system. But as far as the funds here, the project's estimated at 3.2 million. There's three owners to the system. Nuaces County is 19%, which represents $680,000 that was being asked about. RTA is 6%, excuse me, County's 19%, 608. RTA is 6% at $192,000. The city is 75% and they passed a bond on it back in 2018 for 2.4 million. So the total project is actually 3.2 million. And the project is quite extensive. But I've been doing work behind the scenes on this project to get ourselves prepared to where we can move forward as fast as possible. But again, we're dealing with public safety. And also, county operations and city operations also utilize this system in times of disaster or for daily operations. So we have to coordinate with everybody to bring everybody from EDAX to the P-25. Does anybody have any questions for me as far as the radio system itself, the background behind it?
So, so when you see the, the updated CO, so if it's the will of the court, which I hope it will be to.
Judge, I'd make that motion.
Okay. That'd be great. Okay, motion in a second. Let me just get that. And just to make sure we're clear, Commissioner Chesney, you mean for it to be funded by
Yes, ma'am.
CO 2019 for that amount of $608,000? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, let's do that piece of it. And then also the amendment needs to be considered as well. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct as well.
Is there a motion for the, okay, thank you. And I'll take that as a second. So the amendment also is, is on the table. All those in favor of signify, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Judge, I just wanted to say real quick, Peter's always done a great job. I really appreciate all the effort. I know y'all have all worked hard on this. But Peter's kind of the expert in this area and we really appreciate all the hard work.
Been there a long time.
Yeah, been there a long time.
So, so just so we're clear, just so you guys have awareness, we will be paying 23% under this new amendment. And that's a departure from 22%. But because we knew it was coming, we budgeted appropriately. And Dale was aware of this particular, I would say, increase. And if you'll notice, it's an increase of $60,867, 20, 72 cents to the budget, okay? And that's, so that's, just so you know, that's in addition too, but it's been budgeted. And then now we've got enough to do both the, the communication system and as well as the, the radio. So total, all in, we've probably allocated from our COs about $2 million, about what, $2.8 maybe, Dale? $2.1, $2,800,000. So we've made a huge investment in our, in our radio upgrades and the communication systems that are associated with it. And again, just lots and lots of work behind getting to this point. Peter, is there anything else we've left out that you feel is important with either the P-25 upgrade? Again, we just want to make sure people understand the difference, right? Difference between the daily Wells radios, that's one thing. And the P-25 upgrade to the communication system, something totally different. So when you're talking about it, and I think this is a great talking point for you commissioners, that you've made a major, we've made a major investment in, in this, you know, obviously, emergency system.
This will alleviate dropped calls that we're currently experiencing on the outer edges of our county. And it will strengthen our infrastructure and bring it up to, to date with the rest of the state. And.
And it'll last a long time, right Kathy?
Yes, ma'am, it certainly will.
You want to remind everybody, it's got a good, it's got a good life. And so I think it's really important that, that people. And so I think it's really important that people understand that we make this investment for years to come, right?
Yes, ma'am. And it's been placed on a new tower. This new tower was enhanced, and Peter Collins was responsible for moving all of our current capacities to the new tower. And he's lowered it from 850 feet to 650 feet and put in all of the new switches and some new microwave already with this money that he's received for in-kind donations. So he's really worked hard on this project, and he's going to see it through to fruition. And it will be a huge asset to us.
Judge, may I add one thing to this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Another really good move here. If you remember, I think the last time I was at Commissioners Court, we passed the MOU for the Coastal Band Public Safety Radio Coalition, which is basically eight other entities, San Patricio County, the Port, Orasas, Kingsville, just to name a few. But that coalition, our upgrade here was segue into all of their upgrades. And the goal of the coalition is to be able to talk across this region seamlessly as one radio system. So being that we are doing this upgrade, and we're moving forward, and everybody else is doing upgrades, we're actually in sync with each other to where when we need to do mutual responses, everybody can communicate. So this is a win-win, not just for the county itself and the citizens here, but for the citizens throughout the region. The other goal, which gives us the ability, is have communications all the way up to San Antonio, up to Austin. And I'm working with L-CRA to do an interlocal that will enable us to cross our systems over and be able to talk to one another as if it's just one system. So this is all opportunity. If we were to stay on EDAX, we just, you know, we'd just be a little island, and we wouldn't be able to communicate with the other folks.
Yeah, and of course, during a major catastrophic event, this is why this is such a great need. And we've already experienced going through a catastrophic event in Harvey where this didn't exist. And that's why it's so important. And we'll have a little fun telling them about the next great communications project in this, for the spring with our fiber optic loop. But we'll save that for another day, Peter.
Yes, that sounds good to me.
But we've got big plans for communications networks, and it all starts with these types of interlocals. And anyway, let me ask the commissioners, there's a lot of information, but if I was going to point to anything, it's the MetroCom summary that you have in front of you that's really the best way to tackle a lot of this information. And you'll notice that the RTA, they're 6%, we're at 19%, and Corpus Christi's at 75%. I don't know if I'm being redundant, but that was important, I think, for the public to hear, that we're, we share in a equitable way. Kathy, anything else that you want the court to? I think you're good, I think we're good, because we voted on the amendment, we voted on the funding for the P-25 upgrade. I think you're good. I think you just need to kind of keep this status report coming back to us whenever you think it's appropriate.
Yes, ma'am, I certainly will. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And we'll bring back any potential opportunities to get funded with 911. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to receiving a report from Tomas Duran regarding our Nuaces County Employee Health Plan. And Tomas? 2020's been a difficult year for health in the world, in the country, in the state, locally. It shouldn't be any different for us here, right?
Should I take it off?
You can, you're far enough, if you'd like, if it's easier for you to visit with us.
He might run away from me.
Okay, well, we'll make Michael move a little further.
No, get you. No, thank you for the opportunity. I, after I visited with you late last week, attempted to contact everybody, trying to make sure that I had a good understanding of what they'd like to, what type of information they wanted to get on this report. And really, very brief information I received back, which was primarily regarding the expenses relative to COVID, both treatments and testing. Is that my correct understanding, or?
Yes, I think so. I mean, I think the most important thing is that we need to sort of give an overview for the court as to what our, you know, guesstimate is, you know, the end of the year was, this was a tough year, right? For our own self, we're self-insured, to remind the public, we're self-insured. COVID-19 had an impact, but it's not just COVID-19.
That's right.
And we had major impacts to our health insurance fund. And as a result, you've informed me that we are, you know, sort of barely going to end the year with barely a little bit of positive. But unfortunately, that means that we've literally wiped out all of the funds that we had saved up in reserves.
That's correct.
So, go ahead.
I can give you a quick overview.
That'd be great.
And I'm going to do it in general terms with pretty accurate numbers. And if you all want something in writing later, I'd be glad to provide that or anything else you need. Essentially, as you know, you're self-funded program, you have reinsurance to cover catastrophic losses, both what we consider to be individual stop losses, that's a particular claim, and also you have an aggregate that's like an umbrella coverage. It's not like it is an umbrella coverage for the health plan. Essentially, you have been funded, you're funded generally through contributions of premiums by employees in the county on a defined amount at the end of last fiscal year, prior year, not this one or the last one, but we had estimated approximately about close to under $2 million ending balance. I don't want to call it reserve, because typically on a self-funded plan, you project ending balances, but you also have a reserve. I don't recall Nuaces County ever having had a designated reserve in addition to whatever we projected as an ending balance, and I've been around a pretty good while. But anyway, that ending balance was projected to be approximately right under $1,008,000. I think it's $1,786,000 or something to that effect. But that's from memory, but that's pretty accurate, I'm certain. When we discussed increased contributions a year and a half ago, I felt comfortable with $1,008,000 in ending balance if you did not feel like you needed to make an adjustment in contributions, so long as you had that ending balance available and didn't use it to reduce your contributions. And so that ending balance remained there, and so we started the year that way, last year. Then COVID hit sometime April, March, April, May. We did not see those expenses for some time, but it started accumulating. I think the first report I provided to the county was in the neighborhood of about half a million dollars, $400,000 from pieces of a treatment, medical treatments, and another $50,000, $60,000 on testing type. That by year end has become $1 million. So in essence, what happened, the impact of your last year ending balance was that you ate $1 million in COVID-related expenses. So your ending balance for last year, or beginning balance if you want, from my accounting is around $50,000. And I should note that we keep separate, we report differently, because you maintain records for purposes of your financial reports here and tracking and accounting, whatever. We maintain records in a different way, because, and when I say we, me collectively with the carriers and with the TPA, whomever it happens to be, we maintain records the way that the insurance companies like to have it, because it's geared to provide information on a regular basis, and we have certain requirements that we have to notify on potential large claims, on and on and on.
In a way, and I'm just trying to help, because you know how it is, the public doesn't understand our acronyms, your TPA, you mean your third-party administrator.
Third-party administrator.
Boom Chaplin.
Yeah, Boom Chaplin in this case, is the company basically that's going to case the bills.
Correct. Right, right, right. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so there's always going to be a difference, and there's a reason why I want to go in there, too. There's always going to be a difference between a report that you may get from the auditor's office versus a report that I've always provided the county on a monthly basis, typically to the judge for however long I've been around. Now, those differences are not significant in the sense that they are differences, but it's primarily geared to the dates that you all may post something, or the day you may bill something. While we're doing it based on a mix of accrual and what's expected. So there's a flow in there that the numbers, if you're trying to match it, it's very difficult. Though Mr. Ashley and I have, in fact, discussed it on a number of occasions, he's been here. And I don't think that either here, I would think that there are any significant differences. It's just going to happen, but I'm telling you, because I want to make sure that when you look at him, you say, well, why is this one say 100,000 and the other one says 30? Well, that's why, you know?
So would it be fair to say that you have like a true, you do a true-up with your folks for the, you're almost ahead of us?
I'm ahead of you. I know what's going to, what you're going to pay before you.
Before we see it.
Before you see it.
So there may be a differential, but at the end of the day, it's going to show up at least the best to your knowledge, somewhere in the vicinity of plus 50,000.
Plus or minus, in some cases, it may vary. And let me, I'm going to go there, too. And I won't say who, but I mean, I discussed that briefly with someone. I talked to, I tried to reach all of you over the weekend, but I was only able, I was not successful to reach everybody. But one of the questions asked was, in our ending balance, and why was it so large, which I believe was $1,560,000 or $1,600,000 approximately, ending balance for this, I mean, expenses for September. And the reason is, is that when we have, we have a, our reinsurance contract is what's called incurred and paid. By incurred and paid, to translate it into English, is we have to incur the bill in that 12-month period or prior to, but it must be paid within that 12-month contract. Otherwise, we don't get the money back. Well, we've had a number of claims that could potentially meet that requirement, and in order for the county to receive reimbursements, those bills are expedited and paid before the end of September so that we can file the claim and get the money back. In this case, you're going to have about $150,000. I don't know if you have received the jet or not. So what happens is that at the last month of every contract year, a review is made, and bills are expedited for payment. And that's where you had an inordinate, more than average, payments for the month of September of last fiscal year, okay? That's a question asked, so I'm trying to explain it now.
That's a good question.
And that happens also, that will also have an impact on your first month of the following fiscal year, October. So you should have a reflect, and I think you do, you should reflect a lower cost of claims for the month of October. But it all equalizes over a period of a year, okay? So when I make my projections for your expenditures, I'm based in, I'm based in knowing that information. Now, you may not have it, but I do. So I get notifications, for example, if someone goes in and we think it's going to be a potential $100,000 bill, I get an email telling me, giving the details of it, so I can track it. That way, I can know if you're going to be spending more money 45, 90 days later. I can call Mr. Ashley or his staff and say, hey, you're going to get a hit with a $300,000 check. So you'll be forewarned of it and not say where this is coming from. And those types of things happen on a routine basis. And frankly, I don't want to make it sound like they're not routine, but we treat it routinely. I mean, it's part of the job, you know? But that is what happened on your year end of this year, is we had a very large claim, touching half a million dollars, and we're getting money back. And that's the way it had to be done in order to maximize how much money comes back to you, okay? The COVID expenses that began sometime in March, really, we did not see them for about 45 days, 60 days later. And those expenses, my last report that I saw for last year, but I'm talking last year, I'm talking my last fiscal year, were in the neighborhood of slightly over $700,000 for treatments, and about another $180,000 for testing of employees and dependents. And that was touching a little over $900,000 year end. I just received that report end of last week, okay? So it was an update from a prior report, which was about $300,000 less on a fiscal year basis. The other is that there's ongoing, there are other ongoing things, but I think we look okay, except that you wiped out any monies you had at the beginning of this fiscal year. I mean, you had zero money, from my perspective, okay? Not necessarily from the county's perspective, but you had $50,000 from our numbers, so, and you're going to have to pay and have had to pay close to somewhere around $1 million for the month of October. And we're now in November. And so my report certainly is going to look different than your report, okay?
And I think that I'd like for the commissioners to be able to delve in and ask any questions, if they have any. But my big question to you that you and I have shared over and over again is the opportunity to go seek dollars back for COVID-19 reimbursements. And both you and I know the difficulties that are associated with it, but I just want the court to know that we are going to pursue approximately $900,000 worth of COVID-19 potential dollars that are, that could come back to us.
I've had, in fact, I don't remember, don't hold me to the day, but I remember when, when, before budget, we were discussing the issue of the need to really track down accurately in case we could recover some of those funds. And so we started doing that back then. I don't remember if you, I don't know if you remember that conversation or not, but we discussed that, and you asked me that I meet with Mr. Ashley. But I mean, we're talking a few months back, okay?
Right.
And I can go back and dig it, but so I've had that discussion with Mr. Ashley a couple of times, not very deep discussions, just on passing of tracking it to make sure that if there was a possibility to recover some of those funds, that we could do so.
Well, and we know they have been given plenty of funds by the CARES Act, so there's, there could be a pathway forward there. But I think the courts, what we're going to have to decide as a court, is on another occasion, maybe not today, is to work with our auditor and figure out how we're going to deal with the shortage of our cash reserves for the next fiscal year, which we're in. So I think if there is a message today that I'm hearing, is that, okay, so you escaped by the hair of your chinny-chin-chin for this last fiscal year, given a worldwide pandemic and some very serious claims, maybe that's not such a bad result. But the negative or the downside is that you don't have any cash reserves. So this court needs to find a way to rebuild reserves. And to do that, I'm certain that we have a plan, and we need to get the plan.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm hearing.
That is exactly what I mean. I can give you my estimate, but I'm not sure I want to give it to you.
Well, I can guess.
But I would say, depending, you know, it's, in all seriousness.
Why don't you give it to us?
Well, I will if you want me to.
Sure.
It is, I'm going to put a contingency there, and it depends on what happens with COVID, okay? You've spent $1 million between March and end of October of last fiscal year, $1 million, give or take $100,000, $900,000 really, to be exact. So if we continue spending money on COVID in that fashion, you will need to add probably another million, too, just for COVID alone, okay? And in terms of the reserves that you burned last year of $1,700,000, you call it ending balance, beginning balance, or reserve, call it what you wish, you burned $1,700,000, $1,800,000. And part of that burn, $900,000 of that was related to COVID. So if I'm telling you, you're going to spend about $1,400,000 in COVID next, this current fiscal year, you still need to replenish the standard medical bills and everything else that you're going to have. I estimate that to be about $700,000. So add the $1,400,000, $500,000 to $700,000, you're going to be looking at $2 million, two, two and a half million. 2.4 to be exact is my real number.
Right.
And when I put the real numbers to it on my desk and make my projections, 2.4 million, you'll need this year.
And of course, Tomas, the age-old question is, is it better to be self-insured, or is it better to have the other, what we call the traditional? Or is it better to have the other, what we call the traditional?
Full insured, look.
Full insured.
You'll save my fees, uh, which are, I consider extremely reasonable. Uh, that's the savings. If you go full insured, uh, grab your total expenses, which I suspect is gonna be around fifteen million, maybe sixteen this year. Uh, the doc, your, your fees and your TPAs and all of that. Say, take two million dollars out of reinsurance. So you're looking at thirteen million. Add twenty-five percent corridor to the thirteen million, which would be, uh, two and a half, three million dollars. And add a little profit to it, so you're looking at four million dollars. And then add that to the fifteen million that you're gonna be paying self insured. And so you're looking at an eighteen to twenty million dollar case.
Right. And, and I think.
I mean, that's just the way it is.
And that's why we're self insured. I just, I just wanted to make sure that the court, you know, I remember we're also catering to our public. And there is a reason that we have chosen to be self insured. And, and the reason is, is money, expenses.
And, and you need to consider that you also, to transition from, to transition from self insured. I'm looking at Mr. Chesney there because he's heard me say this wall of the city. Uh, you're looking at a tail, what's, what we call loosely, the tail. I haven't even told you about that one. That's another, this year was a million six. So you're gonna have to add that on top of that.
I, I don't even see it as feasible.
I don't think so either.
It's not feasible. I just don't want the court to hear it so that, cause they're gonna get asked, well, why don't you just do it the regular way? And the answer is because it's unaffordable for the court.
Well, Judge, we've, and I, I think we did it, uh, maybe a couple of times before you got here. I mean, we've gone through this process and it's extremely unaffordable.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, you can't.
Right.
I mean, we, we went through this, we got bids, we went through the whole thing, and it was like, wow. So, I mean, it's, it's a risk and that's why insurance is called, you know, risk. But we have done the analysis for the public's sake several times to see how much it would be to not have to do self insurance and to do private insurance, and wow, it's staggering.
There are, there are a number of things that I'm pursuing right now. And I have generally discussed it with your person, Agent Michael. Uh, I briefly discussed it with you, Judge, but I don't even think that I completed my comment. Uh, and I'm looking at some other alternatives on how we go about doing this self-funded program that I think it could potentially save you about a million dollars a year. And that's something that the, that I'm trying to see if we, if it's feasible. I'm not prepared to, uh, to, to say that as a fact, but, uh, in fact, I don't know if Mr. Robinson wants to say, but I mean, he and I have been in discussions of when should we start? Or when should I have authority to go out and start working, uh, on this project? Uh, because I wanted to start in November, but given all the commotions and all the issues and difficulties, uh, you know, it's been delayed. But, um, uh, I will probably may need to discuss it some more in greater detail. But either way you look at it, that's, that's a year away. And for the, for this year, to finish this year, you're gonna have at least two, two point four million dollars. That's a fact. I want to make sure I, I'll leave you with that knowledge. You know, in this fund. And I, I don't, you know.
And, and again, I mean, I think that, um, let me ask the court, just because there's, you know, we'll have to discuss uh, the plan going forward with the auditor whenever he, maybe even next time, Dale, uh, next court. But how about questions for Tomas on, on the information that he's provided and where we ended up this fiscal year? Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, so Tomas, what, what do you think about the, uh, the idea of, you know, going for a new plan? And my experience has always been, when you go for a new plan, even if it's not a very well crafted plan, they're at least gonna give you savings in year one and two and maybe year three. You may pay for it in year four or five towards the end. But typically, when you bid, you're gonna do, when you go out for bids with a new plan, you're typically going to get a better deal, even if it's a short term. And I'm thinking short term because of the year that we're, we're dealing with, the year that we're, we're gonna have now and next couple of years till we really get a real recovery. Uh, so what, what's your thoughts on that? What's your experience on that?
I need to get a clarification first. Are you looking at a self-funded, uh?
Like a new RFP?
Uh, no, 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 but are you looking at a, at a future plan that's full insured? Or are you looking at this continued doing the self-funded, partial self-insured plan as we have today?
No, the, the same structure that we have now.
Same structure we have today, okay. Well, I mean, there's a reason because, uh, the answer is different depending on what you want to do. If, if you remain under the same current structure, I'm not aware of any better way to reduce the bulk of your expenses by going out to bid, because we have probably the best carrier network at the lowest cost. Now, set that aside for a minute. So I am in discussions and I think I've discussed it with the judge, uh, hope.
Absolutely.
Uh, with some providers.
Same question, that's why.
I've, I've discussed it with the judge of some providers to attempt to, uh, do some direct contracting. Uh, that will be carve outs from your current situation as you have, to see if there's an avenue to save some money there. And that's, those have been ongoing discussions for the last two, three months, okay? Because this is not something that just, we, I didn't just become aware of this today, I mean, but it's, it's been ongoing. So I am under those discussions and I'm really, it comes back to the contract, I might as well throw it at you. Uh, I'm not supposed to do something without officially asking you and you authorizing me to do it. You know, and I'm on my own out there trying to figure out what in the world I can do to save you money, you know? And just because I'm supposed to ask for the help, to say, yes, go ahead, I assume you want me to go ahead and save you money, so I'm doing that, you know? But, uh, they're preliminary, but I have been working on it for the last two or three months. And those are things that, that I'm looking at. I'm looking at restructuring, how you do reinsurance. I am looking at how we can carve things out of the program and lay them out cheaper. And that's the effort that I was referring to earlier. I'm just giving you a little bit more detail now. But, but to go out and go out to bid necessarily, which we have to do this year, I understand, right? Uh, uh, we have to, we have to, according to Mr. Robinson, we need to do that. So that will lend the opportunity to do some different structures on how we do things. Uh, I've been in contact with several companies that are currently doing what I think really may bring about that million dollar savings that I told you about. Uh, I've been talking to them, there are people that I've known back from my city days, uh, thirty years ago. And, and they've developed a system, this, which is, I think, something that we might look at to implement. Doesn't mean that Boone Chapman couldn't do it either. I mean, I've discussed that with our current, current third party administrator. They, you know, we're doing to some extent, uh, we're doing it already and we approved those programs that we discussed a year ago on, uh, some carve outs for surgeries and stuff like that that we've been doing as a test. All I'm saying is that that's, that lends itself to a possibility of enlarging, uh, defense that we're doing, okay? I've discussed it with some people, some major providers, uh, with their headquarters to, to see how minimal they are to expand those types of programs. Yeah, I'm real hesitant to get into a lot of details because it's real preliminary discussions.
No, I know. I, I, I just.
But it's with the goal of saving a million dollars, okay?
And, and by the way, you know, Boone Chapman, I, I know if it was a plant you did, and I'm just joking. But I had a county employee mention to me within the last few days, all these last few days, it really jumbled up. But it was recently, that county employee unsolicited told me that they really liked the plan that they have. They said, it really helped me in their situation. I don't remember what the.
Well, I'm gonna give you the credit.
But they, they mentioned that, and so that was good to hear because.
I'm gonna give you the credit though, Commissioner. The, it's your plan, because you're the ones that designed the plan. Boone Chapman is just simply doing what we're paying them to do.
Right.
So the credit is, is to the five of you.
No, I mean, I, I know we, I know you've worked hard. I know that, you know, we're, we're always looking for the best plan. You know, some of the ways that we can save, you know, looking at, is there, you know, what does the network have? Can it be improved? Are there other networks out there that can give us some savings? Cause like I said, I mean, whether it be in healthcare, you know, health insurance or any contract that we've had, you know, we always look and see that there is always a, a savings upfront. And like I said, I know that, that the tail end is where maybe you may end up paying more, especially we see that in healthcare. So my thing would be, you know, third party administrator, network, see how can that be crafted to help us save some money upfront and then hopefully long term as well. And of course, keeps the, you know, the, the impact on the employee down to, uh, down to a minimum. Uh, I, and, and just, you know, while we're dialoging here, I, you know, want to share my concern, you know? I, I know that we have a very good, uh, pharmacy plan, right? The biggest or one of the best in the nation.
It's one of the best one in the nation.
So, um, I still have in me just a little bug that I can't get over that we don't have Walgreens, okay? And that's because I think we should have every pharmacy in our plan. Now, I know that there's discounts, there's ways that they can make.
You get half a million dollars back for not having Walgreens. That's, you know, it's a.
I, I know, I know. We've saved half a million.
That's it.
And, and I believe, based on my experience, and I'm not in insurance, but I've been doing insurance with public entities for, for a while now. And, and my experience is, you know, we could get a million dollars instead of just a half a million, right? If we add Walgreens in. It's the way we structure it. I think we need to be very careful how we, we word, we plan out, our, our structure, our plan. Because, hey, I'm all about saving money. And I think we're gonna save money regardless, and especially with one of the best plans that there is out there. But I think if we craft it in a way that we're careful, we'll make sure that we can capitalize on even a bigger savings. So let us not put that away.
No, no, no. I agree, I agree. But let me, let me, so you'll really, because I don't want, uh, I want to make sure it's, it's clear. When we, uh, when I came forward to you all and recommended taking Walgreens out, we was based on options that we had available, which included taking out CVS and keeping Walgreens, which included going to H B and take out CVS and Walgreens. It included all of the options. And the most beneficial one, not, not affecting the employees, was to drop out Walgreens. And so, but that doesn't mean that it may have not changed already. That was three years ago. So when we go out, when we go out this time around, which we have to anyway, we will be doing the same exercise and I will be bringing to you. And that needs to be done in a confidential fashion, because they require, I cannot release the competitive rates of what we have, okay? But, but that is the exercise we went through, and if we go out to bid, which we will, assuming you still keep me around here, uh, after giving you bad news. Uh, you know, uh, when we do that, we will go through exactly the same exercises. Uh, and, and it'll be your decision. I'll make a recommendation as to which one I think is best. But ultimately it'll be your decision, you know?
Of course. And I, I know you're working hard on it, and, and I'm, you know.
And I appreciate you saying that.
A lot of times, like I've said before, when there's various issues, I want to talk out it out loud. So we all kind of remember what the issues are, what the concerns are, so that we know when we start looking at developing a plan with Michael and all that, that we're all just kind of cognizant. And I'm not saying I'm coming up with great ideas, but these are questions I come up with a lot of times. I know we've heard these questions before from this court. And so, just so we can kind of be cognizant of that as we go forward. So we can just try to, I know you're gonna work to give us the best plan. You're not in it to cause us more money or to hurt us in any way. I know that that's what your job is for us. So if we can just make sure that we look at what the best is, you're gonna do the groundwork for us and then come back and, and say, hey, maybe this time, like you said, the market has worked its way out that we can include all the companies in there, then so be it. Cause I'm just, I'm all for more choices. And I think the market provides better service for the employees when you have a variety, in a full variety, right? Not just one exclusion, say a Walmart pharmacy or CVS pharmacy excluded. I, I really would like to see everyone to give people a better chance to really.
Open up.
And also to help reduce the lines at CVS, cause man, they're too long. I, I want to see it spread out a little bit, right? So not, not any punches them, they, they, they help us out when we need to go.
I understand.
But now, thank you, Tomas.
Thank you. And I, I want to echo, just keep, keep finding ways that we can, you know, have opportunities, obviously, to save costs, and that's what we've been working on. And I do want to just tell the court that I, we have asked Tomas through emergency management, our provider on vaccinations. So just so you guys know, vaccines will be free, but there's always a but. And the but part has to do with the state wants us to receive the co-pays. So it's nothing, um, it's not exactly that easy. And then, of course, we are going to try to be a provider. The county is going to try to be a provider for vaccines. And this is something that we're gonna work through, Boone Chapman, and, and see how we can make that.
We've, I've got two, uh, I'm working on two options to.
To bring to us.
To bring it to you at some point.
And this is part of the plan that, that we will submit to the state of Texas. So just want you guys to know that insurance winds up being an important aspect, not just fiscally and for the, for our employees as their benefits, but it winds up being a part of COVID nineteen response, so. Okay, um, any other questions for Tomas? Okay, Tomas, you're in luck today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoyed it.
Um, we're gonna move on to, um, the registration. I'm sorry, uh, it's, it's to lease for registration and title services. Um, they're workstations, we call them the RTS workstations. And it's the, today we need to do an order approving the inter-local agreement, authorizing the tax assessor to do this, to lease these for registration, um, and title services, workstations from TX, TX D M V. Hi.
Hello.
Hello again. We had you last time. Welcome.
Uh, yes ma'am, so this is a housekeeping issue. Um, it was approved on the last commissioner's court. Agenda, this is just a simple adjustment to the verbiage of the agenda. And to sign the order.
And to sign the order. Got it. Okay, so I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Commissioner Chesney, I'll let you take the next one.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, based on the recent opinion, uh, from the county attorney, um, I put this on the agenda to, um, do what, or to comply with, uh, the county attorney's opinion. I've already, I'd already filed out an affidavit on this, um, but just to be clear. Um, so I would make the motion to consider approval and transfer of my donated salary to the commissioner, yeah, sorry, from Commissioner Precinct Four to Commissioner Precinct Four Projects into the O one three eight account.
Okay.
And Commissioner, that amount would be six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Yeah, thank you.
And I heard a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay. Um, the next one is a discussion of the duties of the governmental and legislative affairs position in the Office of Commissioners Court Administration. And, uh, this is a posted position that Tiner has available in his court administration office.
My bad, Judge. Can I go backwards? I meant to ask, do I, can I, will that take care of it for two years or do I have to do this again?
You have to do it each year.
Every year.
Every year.
Okay, so I'll, okay.
Put it on the agenda next year at the same bat time.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you.
Same bat channel, same bat time.
Yes ma'am.
Um, or earlier, actually. Um, Tiner, we were just about to talk about the, the, the duties and just, I know Julie is not on, but I, I do know that you worked with her and, um, for many months on a job description. And the court, uh, wanted to ask you a few questions about the job description that's available and posted. Um, we're looking for a very special individual that would basically have a myriad of duties. I'm not sure the, the title, uh, really, I don't know if you could put a, a title on a Tiner, but that's really what it is.
Maybe, maybe somebody can come up with a better title.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's an unders, it underscores all the great things you've done in that, with that particular office.
And you, you know, um, this commissioners' court is doing a lot. And in fact, um, you know, so many projects, um, uh, you know, with money and you're doing things and you're building things and you're, with Hurricane Harvey recovery, you're fixing things, you're dealing with FEMA and, uh, back in the, long ago, the, you know, we weren't raising taxes. We weren't issuing bonds a long time ago, and there wasn't as much to do as there is now. The, the longest commissioners' court agenda ever was, uh, in September. If you recall, the, our consent agenda went through the alphabet a couple of times, but.
And Judge, I don't think, I mean, I don't think Tiner needs to justify the existence of this. This is not a new position.
No, I, I just wanted him to give a little bit of background.
And, and. All I put it on here for was.
Just to remind everybody.
No, no, all I put it on here for was to, um, discuss, uh, because I think, and I was trying to find it on here, but I think this has a requirement of a law degree. And I, and I, and Commissioner Matas had actually brought it up, and then I just put it on to discuss because I, I think if we could expand the, um, maybe like, and a masters or, you know, something.
And/or.
And/or, so that there's potential for more applicants.
Masters.
Yeah, masters.
And you can.
Yeah, and, and then the other things, you know, in the past, we had talked about whether we wanted to make, you know, the.
Yeah, and, and then the other thing, you know, in the past, we talked about whether we wanted to make, you know, this have some, maybe, uh, have some budgetary responsibilities, you know, we talked about a budget officer, and I know Dale's the budget officer.
Right, you said financial, and just so you know, that is in there, we did look, and it's in there, financial, contractual, transactional, something like that. But we can strengthen, we can, I mean, Tiner can talk to Julie and try to strengthen some of the language so that it sounds a little more financial.
And that was all, that was the only reason, I, I just wanted to make it to where.
I just.
We, we expanded the.
Expanded.
Degree qualification and to talk about. Yeah, you know, because this court had said we wanted someone potentially maybe with financial background, and then obviously the governmental affairs. But I mean, but, but this person can also lean on Tiner for the governmental affairs, because Tiner knows that, not, not do, I mean, I don't want, I'm not trying to. I'm just saying he can lean on Tiner a lot to learn that part of it, if there's not someone out there that has specific governmental affair. There may be, but I don't.
I think, I think the governmental affairs, like I said, is a misnomer, it's just, it just happened to be the way that it was had before, I guess, that the position was there before, um.
Could be like a bachelor's degree with preferably a master's degree?
Yeah, I don't think a bachelor's degree is going to work, because you've got a situation here on from pay grades.
This may be Julie coming on here.
Yeah, Julie's got to talk to you about that.
Um, commissioners, I did have the language like that. Um, you, you know, uh, uh, actually requiring a masters or a postgraduate degree. Julie called me when we were posting, she said, Tiner, this needs to be a doctorate at that rate of pay.
Because of the rate of pay, it, it, this particular, it makes more than most of our other lawyers.
A doctorate, holy cow.
And, you know, I said, I just go, you know what, Julie, I'm not going to fight you on this, let's see if we get somebody.
Hold on.
My, my concern was this, and, and, and I sent it to you, and I C C'd the court on it so that we wouldn't have any discussion offline, but my, my concern was obviously the, the, the juris doctorate degree, because you, in the example I gave you, so you go to LinkedIn, you go to Tac, you go to T M L, you go to any agency, public, private, and you're going to find that even those in Washington DC, and I, and you can pull it up right now on the computer, you're going to find that they say, you know, it, you know, it, they could say, the language could say something like bachelors with masters preferred, or masters preferred, or whatever. But I have never, even for top agencies in Washington DC, ever seen that they only pigeonhole it to the juris doctorate.
Yeah.
I, I think that there's, there's, you know, there's missed opportunity, I, if we can get that, it doesn't prevent us from getting that person.
That's right.
It just means, let's, let's widen it a little bit more to, to get more applicants in, and then, then you all, you know.
Yeah, then you pick the best person.
And, you know, if that's the will of the court, that's fine, that's the way I had it originally.
Yeah.
And, um.
And again, we can work out.
It's too much.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I think a masters is great.
But we want you, if you're out there listening.
Right, I like the word preferred, I think that's a good, um, there's a good way to, to do it.
Is it masters preferred?
Right, and, and I think you might, we can go, you know, I would just say, you've heard the court, they want to make sure that it's, that you find, if you find an amazing person, that that person doesn't get blocked because he didn't have the particular, but, but you can put preferred, and that way you still attract that group, that subset.
Well, yeah, someone has a masters in business administration with an, an.
Or CPA.
Yeah, or CPA, with, but, but someone has a masters in, in business administration with a, a emphasis on accounting, and that's going to really be appealing to me, based on what we've talked about, what we may need in addition to, so, yeah, I, I don't want to.
The, the idea, yeah, the idea here is that the court is different, right? And so, there was only like one Steve Waterman who absolutely happened to have jack of all trades, right? He was like this financial person background, but he also was a transactional person, and he understood the governance of the court. I've often said that, that court administration, we, governmental affairs, um, we have our expert, his name is Tiner Little, he also happens to be the court administrator. You don't really need another governmental affairs person, per se, but the idea of the word government is good there, because you're running court from there, right, so it's agenda, contracts, transactions, all these other things, so the J D piece of it is, is key, because everything you do is really legal from that, from that.
And Judge, you're right, there's create projections of both expenditures and revenues in order to keep management informed throughout the fiscal year, there's, I mean.
There's good, good job description.
To me, it's, it reads broadly enough.
It does.
Except for the, the pigeonhole, as Commissioner Matas said, if we, to me, if we can just expand the, the, the degree to a masters with a doctorate, J D preferred, that's fine, however, but I mean, gosh, let's add a masters in there, and.
I, I think that's a good recommendation.
And so Julie's on, I'll work with her, and we'll get that.
Why don't you just work with that and make, and then again, and don't be, don't be afraid, our best positions, when you're looking for somebody else, takes time, so the fact that it's been out there for a couple of weeks doesn't really mean you're not going to get anybody great. Uh, we just, uh, just, I just saw something that we had a natural resource specialist position, and we got nine applicants from all over the country, and they're phenomenal, and six of them had masters or doc, or post-doctorate, so sometimes, but you know what happened, we wound up posting it all over the country, so.
So do we need to make a motion on that, Judge, or does?
I just think he knows.
Masters, you're good.
I'm good with that, yes, we'll get it done.
That's all I wanted to do.
I mean, I don't think we really act upon it as much as Tiner hears it.
Right, and John, does that cover what you, is that good for you, John?
I think you're just talking this out really, just, I mean, Tiner understood already.
I think he did, just to kind of bring it to the forefront.
And I think this may have promoted it already.
Yeah, maybe.
I, I hope so, this is good, this is good.
And we're going to get it on lots of portals and lots of, um, you know, uh, we just need to get it on more portals. That's really been our, our issue is getting it out there, and now that the election is over, I will tell you, there'll be a lot of people coming off of a big campaigns that might want to find a perfect fit in this regard, or even in Austin, you know? Okay, let's do number seven, um, it's, uh, this is kind of the repeat that we always have, because we don't know if we have any, Dale, do we?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, we have, uh, two employees of Inland Parks that, that have worked some overtime for COVID-19. The total number of hours was forty-one point five five hours, excuse me, and a cost of one thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, and I submit that for your consideration.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Motion.
And I'll second, I've got a second with Commissioner Vaughn, all those in favor signify by saying, let me do the ayes first, just for the clerk. Aye.
Aye.
And then nay? And one nay for, um, I want to thank Edward for making sure that, um, when at the very last minute, um, uh, we had to completely move voting and testing could not be at the same location per the governor's orders. We had a really quick movement, uh, we had a, you know, we tested over, in a three-day period, probably over three hundred people in the, in the western part of our county because of a, of an outbreak, and so, uh, that's why these hours get, um, built in and brought forth, and we really do appreciate it, because the quicker you can test, quicker you can isolate, and so appreciate that. Okay, now, Juan, I know you've been waiting, thank you, uh, you've got a present, you've got multiple things. But, uh, let's start with the presentation on the North Beach redevelopment traffic impact study.
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, um.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is for the next agenda item, uh, the FEMA flood insurance one's up. Um, my denumber kit aren't going to be able to attend.
Okay.
Judge, however, I did print out copies of the.
Okay.
I did print out.
For us.
If you want to keep, or you want to table.
Uh, well, why don't you just, um, let's do this, let's receive it into the record, and, um.
Those, those are copies of the executive summary.
And then you can have them come back on November sixteenth.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That, that's perfect.
All right, Commissioner Vaughn, would that be all right with you? Okay, but at least people can study it now and, and have it in advance.
And Judge, what we'll do is we'll provide you a full copy of the report.
That's great.
We just received the, the signing sealed document yesterday from my denumber kit, and I'll, I'll forward that to you.
And the only thing I would ask is that we promised the city that we would get them a copy, if you would get them a copy of the report.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I might send you an email, there might be two or three others, what I'm going to call stakeholders, that would want to see the report, including the TERs board, and, uh, I'd like to work with Commissioner Vaughn, there's probably two or three other stakeholders, maybe more, that would want it, and we'll just email you, but before November sixteenth, that way, if you really want to have comment on it, we got to get it out in the field.
Yes, ma'am, and that's just a, and just, that's just a copy of the executive.
All right, so then we'll move away from, since it was received, presentation only, um, then we'll move to, we'll wait for them on the sixteenth. And, um, and so, I guess, do you want to just do it that way as a table, or table to the sixteenth, is that okay? Motion to table the, the oral presentation to the sixteenth, motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, okay, and, uh, okay, so now we can go to your, or your number two, Juan.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, Judge, Commissioners, this is just a, an update, uh, for the revised preliminary firm maps uh, from FEMA, and it's also the flood insurance, uh, study, uh, we received these back in, uh, mid-August. Uh, we reviewed the maps, um, can you go to the next slide? Uh, the two firm maps that were submitted to us, uh, one was for the City of Bishop, and the other one was for the City of the Corpus Christi in the downtown area. Um, you go to the next one, next slide. Uh, this is a, a copy of the, uh, of the firm app for the City of Corpus Christi. Uh, to the top right-hand corner, uh, what's been, uh, deleted from the floodway or the, uh, is the, uh, you kind of see some islands along the, uh, the Bayfront area, uh, and those were deleted. Of course, this is in the City of Corpus Christi, uh, we're just presenting it to courts, so that we, we know that those items were, were deleted from the, from the map. The next one. Uh, this is the firm map of the City of Bishop, uh, what you see in the dark outline area, that's the city limits of Bishop. Um, the, the blue, the light blue is, is what's in the floodway, uh, towards the northwest corner of, uh, of City of Bishop. Uh, they pretty much extended out the floodway in that area, which is in that direction, uh, and go to the next slide. Uh, to kind of simplify it, uh, anything that's in yellow got expanded in the flood plain, in the floodway. So those are the modifications that, that have been made, so anything in yellow indicates the, the, the addition of the flood plain, uh, FEMA did a study on the creek, uh, there is a dam on that creek. So based on that flood insurance study, uh, these modifications are, are being made, the plug, again, they're preliminary. You want to go to the next one? In conclusion, uh, these are the, uh, the FEMA flood preliminary, uh, revised firm maps. Um, we have ninety days for appeal, uh, and the effective date, uh, and what I mean by the effective date is that when they get approved by FEMA, uh, it takes anywhere from seven to ten months. And that's during the, the appeal process, which will be between, uh, May and August of twenty twenty-one. Um, one thing that we do get asked all the time from the constituents and engineers and, and the developers is that what maps do they use, because since these are maps that are preliminary, um, do they use a preliminary map? Or they, they, do they use the ones that are still in effect? And we always recommend, uh, for my office, that they use the ones that are in effect, because, uh, you can't be using the FEMA maps. This is kind of letting them know that if you want to use them, you can use them, but it's up to whoever the developer or the engineer or, or the engineer is to, to make that decision. And that's all I have, Judge.
Perfect. Well, there's a kind of a lot to digest here, but I might have you back, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Commissioners, obviously Bishop is kind of an interesting one, I thought. Um, it's a big expansion.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
What do you think about that?
Based on this, based on the flood insurance study, Judge.
It's, it's accurate.
It, it's, it's accurate, because number one is, I don't think they took that, the, they need to, they need to take the dam into consideration.
Uh-huh.
So hydraulically, that's going to, uh, hold, uh.
Right.
Hold some water back, so based on the study, you know, we would pretty much recommend it.
Yeah, so, um, do you need us to accept it?
No, Judge, this, this is for presentation, since they're preliminary, when they finalize and they submit it, then we'll come back to court to accept them.
Okay, good, so, Juan, you have a question.
You've got to remember also, that, all the water from Bishop, from coming away from Bishop goes in through Fiesta, you know, then goes back to Pretro Nila, so.
Okay.
But we've got to really watch that, I mean, we can flood as ready as it is, so we just got to watch the way water flows.
Well, that's why we're doing that, uh, we, we should hear something hopefully very positive from our Texas Water Development Board grant very, very soon. Maybe you could get these to Susan, uh, just, I'm sure she's seen them actually already.
Well, we'll send, we'll argue with Susan.
Send them to Susan, just, and, and make sure they're in, in keeping with, you know, what they're already thinking. I know they're already thinking it, but, but still.
And then again, Judge, we, we have ninety days for to comment on it.
To comment on it, I just think she's in the best position to help us write those comments and.
And we'll, I'll argue with Susan.
That'd be great, okay, if there are no other questions for Juan, I can move on to his third topic, which is, uh, the submittal of roadway safety project proposals for Tech, Tech dot, this is part of their twenty twenty highway safety improvement program.
Ye- yes, ma'am, uh, Tech dot reached out to us a couple of weeks ago, um, that if we wanted to submit for a, uh, grant for, uh.
Yes.
For doing improvements to, to, uh, where there's, um, accident.
Yeah, high incidents.
High incidents, and that are prone, uh, what we've done since then, Judge, just so you'll know, is that we've had our staff go out and ad, identify additional areas that we can apply for putting, you know, uh, Chevron markings or
Sure.
Put in additional, uh, traffic centralization for stop signs with blinking lights or other blink lights that we need. So our staff has gone out there and identified those areas, I know we've gone through, uh, each individual precinct, and we're going to, and the only thing bad thing about this thing, uh, this grant is that we got to submit it by Friday.
Oh, yeah, I know, just so you know, um, so obviously Commissioner Vaughn, that six twenty-four area is like a biggie. And I know that ISAC actually had a list of, um, the areas they thought, whether it's traffic lights or Chevron, you might want to see if you could grab that pretty fast, you could call Brad, Brad, or trying to remember, um, who would have that, but ISAC, the Island Strategic Action Committee, they actually did a study hoping that it would make it for the bonds, maybe like two years ago, and it never did, and it's because they're expensive, traffic lights are expensive.
They are, Judge.
And, um, and so maybe Commissioner Chesney can check into that, those are the two things I'm super aware of, sounds like, but I mean, it would have to be super fast.
Yes, well, we'll meet, we'll meet, uh, our plan was to tomorrow, once we get a, a list, we'll meet with the, uh, each individual commissioner.
Yeah, but.
And just kind of identify.
Right.
Uh, the thing about this is that there's a ten percent match, uh, ninety percent grant.
Well, it's worth it.
And it's well worth it, uh, one thing that, that, about this grant also is that it's a three-year, it's for twenty twenty-two,
Yeah.
Twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, so the first year is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, the second year is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, and then the third year is two hundred and eighteen thousand.
And Maggie's listening, I'm going to have her reach out to all the small mayor, the small towns, and ask them to, because they sort of know best what from incident reports, you know, what, what areas could be problematic, and that way you'll get plenty to choose from.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but I know that ISAC did all of the work, because they were hoping to have it included, so.
Okay.
I mean, I just remember that.
We'll meet.
Okay, call me this afternoon if you want to, and we'll, so we can, if we need to jump on something quick.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but, um, so how are you going to do that with the, um, with the a, a, application on Friday, and you don't have, uh?
We'll, we'll put some, we'll put something together, Judge, we'll, um, and I, and one thing that we are.
No, I'm saying how will you get it done for submittal to the court, I need to make a motion right now, giving you authority to do that.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make that motion, giving you authority.
One, one of the things, Judge, that I do want to ask is that.
Excuse me, Juan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One thing that I do want to add, Judge and Commissioner, is that there is a ten percent match, so is it each individual commissioner would be willing to?
No, I wouldn't worry about that, I would submit, and then if we get it, then we will deal with the funding source at the time.
Okay, that's fine.
But I appreciate you asking, but I think that, that.
Hey, if you get me ninety percent on something, we're going to figure out how to get you ten.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure.
It's going to be great, but I appreciate, no, no, I appreciate that, and we'll make sure, because, um.
Hey, if you can figure out how to do that for me on Bob Hall Pier, I'd appreciate that too, man, just going to start working on that one.
Well, um, yeah, I just, um, is there a, is there a limit, is there an amount of money?
And one, one thing, Judge, is that, that's a hundred and seventy-two thousand for the first year, uh, we are going to be, uh, City Corpus Christi and San Patricia are also going to be submitting for that a hundred and seventy-two thousand.
For how much?
A hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-two.
Yeah, big spenders they are at Tech dot.
Yeah, so, and then the, the following year is going to be two sixty-two and so on, but.
But, but it'll go up, but it's, it's like anything, it's, it's funding that would not have been available, is this part of their Project Zero campaign?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I think it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware, so the MPO is, is, um, we also, uh, might want to check with Rob McDonald, MPO, let's see if he's got anything to say. You want to pick your best project?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome, so we have done that authority for you, and, and let us know how we can continue to help you there.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you very much, I'm going to ask Michael to continue our, our court, uh, we're doing so good, um.
Okay, I got a couple that are pretty straightforward, I believe. Uh, the first one is discuss an award for the copy paper, computer paper, N C R paper and envelopes, and I thought it might be fun since we were explaining. computer paper, NCR paper and envelopes. And I thought it might be fun since we were explaining acronyms earlier. If everybody might not be familiar with what NCR paper is. NCR stands for National Cash Register. Um, actually, in nineteen fifty-three, two chemists named Lowell Schleicher and Barry Green developed a carbonless copy paper. Uh, it used, oh, come on, I had a great speech already.
Okay, man, all right. Commissioner Morris, wake up down there, man. That was pretty compelling stuff we just heard.
I was all, ready to tell you about the microencapsulated ink, but, okay. Uh, with that being said.
Well, hold on one second. Motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Well, I didn't even make the recommendation.
Oh, I know. Just, absolutely. Go ahead.
Can I do that? So, I do recommend award to the, a low bidder for the items, Fast Clampit Paper Store.
Oh, I like them. Has anyone ever been to Fast, Fast Clampit?
Nope.
Nope?
I don't think so.
That's because you were never room mother. Fast Clampit is the place where you literally get every single colored paper for, you could, every, every you ever need. I mean, it's like, it's a phenomenal place, and I'm always amazed that we have these great businesses, and I'm so happy we can support them in their endeavor.
Right, and.
In our endeavor.
And I'll, I'll add too that, uh, we in purchasing, since we work closely with the copy center, anytime we have any kind of emergency orders, uh, Fast Clampit has always been there to support Rico and us.
They're off of Air Street, yeah.
And, and for the record, since the bid, it was the low bid, and we are compelled to take the low bid.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, just because there are others, some locals in here, and the other one was about three hundred dollars more. So, I wanna, you know, we always, we appreciate that.
But Fast Clampit is very local.
No, no, right. No, I'm saying it's, they're all local, it looks like, and the bid was the lowest, and that's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Not because Barbara was the room mother there, and, you know, I'm just kidding.
No, I, no, I'm just saying all the room moms would go there to buy paper. That's all I mean.
I know.
Just, and the teachers do too. It's just this awesome store.
So, I got it.
Okay, great. So, Michael, thanks for the recommendation, and, and really thanks for the competitiveness. Three hundred dollars here, three hundred dollars there.
Well, uh,
It all adds up.
Well, y'all need to know too, in full transparency, that not all the bidders bid all the items.
Oh.
So, that's what makes Fast Clampit's price even more remarkable, is that they did bid on all items save one. And their, their price is still lower than people who bid on much fewer items.
Good, that's good enough. So, it was, so it was a lot more, more than that savings. Okay, good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
In fact, it's about twenty-two percent less than what we were paying last year, so that's a huge savings.
Got it.
Okay, uh, next item I have is discuss an award.
I want to vote on it.
We gotta vote.
Oh.
I, we did. Laura, I, he said, I want to make a recommendation. I voted before I even, he even recommended. It's okay.
I think we stopped.
We, we did. We did. But I'll do it again if just makes feel, people feel good. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. See, Michael, what you cost?
Yeah, I know. I try to get creative.
Um, okay.
I'll keep it simple this time.
Go to the second one.
So, the second one is for the hot mix asphaltic concrete. Uh, we recommend award to HAC Materials, uh, at the unit price per ton of seventy-two dollars and forty cents. They were the low bidder.
And who is that?
And, uh, it's Hoss Anderson. Hoss Anderson.
Okay, so local.
And, and, uh, I did want to make note, uh, that on this bid, bid bonds were required, and all the bidders did provide a bid bond, uh, for this. So, all the bids were valid.
All right, I've got a motion and I thought I saw, heard a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. I just want to say for the record that where I come from, Texas is local. I think that we gotta be very careful. All of these companies, uh, that we do business with have a lot of local presence, but they might have other, like Hoss Anderson, they may have other, you know, places in other part of Texas, and that's a good thing. Or, here's a novel one. They might have one outside of Texas, but they still have a local presence. We need to be very mindful that while we support local, we support a global economy. We, we're modern now. We don't just have to go down the street. You could be sitting in a computer at your home and be global and still be local. And I just want to point that out. You did a good job, uh, Michael, in, in, um, bringing us two local ones today. But tomorrow, they could be the best interest of the county, that they're maybe from Dallas, Texas, or Austin, Texas.
Yeah, it's, it's always.
Houston, Texas.
It's always gonna be, uh, the vendor that brings the lowest price to the county in terms of an IFB.
Yeah.
Uh, that's how, what the law requires.
That's how we do it.
Yep.
Exactly. Okay, so moving on to judge, I mean, to judge, to the change order, number two. Um, this goes into Dale's column. Um, it's, it's, uh, the second change order of the year. And then, of course, Dale has one more as well, uh, following. It's a forfeiture report. Dale?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is a budget change order number two. Uh, it's happened to come where there's some, uh, equipment that has, has failed, and we need to replace it. For the medical examiner, their, their, uh, camera equipment has, has failed, and we need to replace the equipment for Robstown Community Services, one of their ice machines has stopped functioning. So, we, again, uh, the repairs need to be done, so we get the, the, both the departments functioning. For Constable Precinct Two, this is for a, a, a contract with a company to, to store their, their images for, for, for their body cams. It's a four web, uh, software hosting, uh, annual, so they have a, a place to store, uh, their images on their bo- on their body cameras. The funds are available for these, these changes, and I submit budget change order two for your approval.
I've got a motion to approve and a second. I didn't hear it, but, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay.
The, the next item is just for receiving, receiving the, the information for you. In, in compliance with Chapter fifty-nine, uh, of the Government Code, we are required to file a report with, with the, uh, uh, Attorney General on the forfeitures for, uh, awards that's been gone to the, the departments. We've worked with the, the Sheriff's Office, Constable Precinct One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. Uh, they've filed the reports with my office. My office is audit the reports. They are in compliance with the information needed. And we are, have submitted those, those claims to the Attorney General. Uh, the one that's, that's pending is the Adisca Attorney, but they have requested an extension, and they will be filing that very soon. The extension was granted. Uh, so with, you, you have the information available for the, uh, for the filings that we, we submitted for the sheriff and all five constables.
Thank you for that. Um, Commissioners, it's just for, um, we just receiving it, right?
That's correct.
We're just receiving it. Okay. Are there any questions, I guess, as I should be asking?
Some move.
Well, we don't need to do it. It's just, oh, I'm sorry, we do need to approve it. Okay.
It's for some, some of the reports.
Go ahead. Motion and a second. But are there any questions for them, for Dale, for on these reports? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. And, um, now we've got, uh, one of our last items, uh, before we go into executive session, and that's discuss and consider approval of transfer of donated salary from Commissioner Precinct Number Two to Precinct Special Revenue Department zero one three seven to fund a salary supplement for Commissioner's assistant. This is back on the agenda. Laura couldn't be with us the last time, and since then, um, we have an opinion. Commissioner Gonzalez, do you want to lead with this?
Sure. Well, if I make a motion on this, uh, here, I just want to kind of recap a little bit on what happened last meeting. And, um, you know, there's a lot of things brought up, a lot of issues that, um, you know, at the, at the beginning, at the end of the budget year, you know, we always get a copy of an order, which is along with statute, uh, which is, um, uh, subsections felt one, five, two, zero, eleven, Local Government Code, which really is an order of how we operate, you know, the law, by law. And, uh, in that, in order says that, um, no official shall hire or fill an employee's position that is vacant unless authorized by the Commissioner's Court. No salary allowance or other compensation shall be paid except for those employees who are on the payroll as of October the first, twenty nineteen, unless specifically authorized or ratified by the Commissioner's Court. The salary and fringe benefits for each vacancy employee position may be transferred by Commissioner's Court to a special revenue designated by the county auditor. The, uh, the authority of the funds provided by the, this budget are frozen for each vacant position until released and reinstated by the Commissioner's Court. So, that, that one, we get at the, at the, at the end of the year budget year, so it, it tells what we, that everything should be brought to court when it, when it comes to, um, supplements and increasing the salaries and everything else. And last time at the meeting, I questioned the fact that the HR, you know, presence was already set because, um, HR evidently didn't, we didn't follow procedure when, when we supplement the salaries for the HR department. And, uh, we talk about eleven thousand dollars. And this, and I'm talking really about seven hundred dollars in my, in my, that I'm always requesting seven hundred dollars to be the supplement. And if I go back and, and, and I pull out the, the records, you know, and all this, I don't know how this gets through to Dale, or Dale, how you do this, but evidently half of them were signed by the judge, half were not signed by the judge, but it still got paid. You know, and you talk about four thousand dollars, three thousand, two thousand. Uh, and, you know, I don't know, we, we following something, or is it, I mean, whose orders are you following? What are you doing? I know the judge has to sign them, but she didn't sign some of them. So, uh, and it says here, uh, from the auditor, it says, "The supplement was approved by Judge Canales. Uh, HR never brought it to Commissioner's Court for approval." So, I think at that time, she should have come to the Commissioner's Court for approval. I mean, that's.
Commissioner, uh,
I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished. You can, I'm not finished yet. I'm, I'm still.
I'm not, I'm just asking if you want Dale to answer you.
No, I'll, he'll can answer me in a minute. I mean, he can answer me in a minute. You know, 'cause I'm gonna ask him another question, the same thing, so. Um, and then we talked about a, a reclassification, you know, that, that was brought up, and both the judge and Dale said that he had been approved in court. And I called, I said, "Dale, you lying." I called you a liar, and I, I apologize for that because probably the wrong word to use, you know? And I was hoping it'd be some kind of a, an error or something. Well, he did send me a note back telling me that I was correct, that that never came to court. It was never approved to court by court, but it was also, but it was done. So, how do we do those things? I mean, my question to Dale again is how do we process these things when we got an order telling us how we do it? And how do we pay them? You know, I mean, you know, Dale, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you because I think you and I talked about this. Uh, you know, and I'm concerned. I'm concerned that if we, we doing it now, I mean, and I don't know how many we've done or whatever, but I'm just, I, this is the two that I concern, 'cause I went and asked Julie on the phone, she was on the phone, and she said five hundred dollars. It was a lot more than five hundred dollars. It was four thousand for Julie and the, some other stuff with her staff. So, it was eleven thousand dollars. But we, we didn't, it didn't come to the court. So, my question is, how do we do this? I mean, how is it going, how do we process this without going to court?
These are.
Question to Dale.
These are important topics, and I just want the county attorney to know that they are not noticed on the agenda, and Dale is free to answer, but they're not, we're here to have a motion on the item that is F-one, and whether or not, uh, Dale wants to answer those. I know that there's very, um, certain good and important information he'd like to give you, but I think it's important to recognize that we should at least act on F-one, I'm sorry, um, E-one at some point. And I, none of the information that came, that he's been discussing has anything to do with E-one, but we can put it on another agenda, uh, for November sixteenth, and it can be discussed if that's what he wants to do, or it can be discussed. You can levy a complaint or an issue, but, or Dale can answer. I just want to point out that none of that has anything to do with E-one.
Last time, Judge, you know, and it wasn't on the agenda either.
Well, doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it right, but.
So, what makes it right, you know? Only when some people do it.
Well, I think that you're misinformed, but the point is, would you like to do the agenda item that you brought forward? Because everything that you're saying is both innuendo, allegations, misinformation.
Black and white.
No, it's, it's, you have, you have a lot of misinformation.
Came from Dale.
Right. Well, why don't you put it on the agenda so that it can be noticed properly? And you can give Dale an opportunity to answer that, because what we're prepared for is E-one. And all of your stuff is very important too, but it needs to be brought up in the proper way.
I'm, I'm, I moved, you know, but I just want to bring that on court like we did last time, so. I moved. Do we approve the, uh, E-one?
Right, and.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to, um, approve salary from Commissioner Precinct Number Two to, uh, Special Revenue Department oh one three seven to fund your Commissioner Assistant. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Oppose, nay. And, um, we've got to go into executive session at this point.
Who, who, I mean, how was the vote? I'm sorry.
Upstained, and I have a, a no.
And I was, I, I was an aye.
The three, three one.
And three ayes. I was. As a matter of public policy, it's inappropriate to give people supplemental pay for not extra supplemental work.
I thought we were gonna bring something that told us whether or not we could do this back. And Jack, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think it sets a bad precedent for other managers.
Well, it does set a bad precedent, but they done it already.
Well, and, and.
And that needs to be back put on the agenda to discuss.
Nope.
And the attorney, the, the attorney opinion basically said we can do this, but you have to come to court and do it in court.
You make a policy decision. Yeah.
Or you have to bring it to the court for approval is what, doesn't have to be a policy decision. It just has to be.
No, it is a policy decision. Because the money is, it goes into general fund, and you, it's re, it's not, it's not, it's refundable, right?
Yeah, whatever Laura said, yeah. I, I think.
We all, we all know. But it's a policy decis- decision of whether or not you think that's an appropriate action for the court, and you did.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, misunderstood that, yes, but that's.
Right.
But I was just telling Carolyn.
If that's what it is, a policy decision, then I'm basically voting on a vote no, because I don't agree with it.
Okay.
Okay, two noes, three yeses, and, um, uh, and we will take up the other matters because your allegations, um, are important and serious, and, and, uh, I believe they should be addressed, uh, because you are, you are, you are.
Clarify, that's what I'm asking.
You have brought them, you have brought them forward, but there's a, a, a agenda item that's needed in Tynor. If you could assist on that, um.
I'm only giving you what the county attorney gave me, Judge.
County auditor, attorney?
I'm the auditor.
Yeah, the auditor without any explanation or information. It's, it's misinformation. You don't understand, uh, the information.
Understand either, Judge, but he gave it to me.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, but you asked him a question on how it was that it came to be, and we're gonna bring it up. It'll be wonderful to bring it up so that the true light can come onto it. So, at this time, executive session is given that Commissioner's Court will go into executive session to discuss matters listed on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. In the event the Commissioner's Court elects to go into executive session, the sections of the Open Meetings Act authorized will be publicly announced. Government Code five five one oh seven one oh seven two oh seven three oh seven four, seven four five, seven six eight six eight seven. We will hold an executive session to consult with an attorney, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personal matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and economic development negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, we will come back into open session and take any appropriate items, um, as discussed in executive session. And so at this time, at twelve twelve for the clerk, we only have one item, and I think it'll be very quick. So, I'm gonna ask that you stay in the vicinity, uh, and we will adjourn for just a moment. It's actually twelve thirteen. Clock changed on me. We're out. We'll turn off our mics. We'll. Okay, good. We're back on the record, and, um, executive session, uh, we are back from executive session. And, thank you. We, we do have action to take on, uh, one item, and that item has to do with a claim uh, for Shoreline Sandwich Company, and do I have a motion with regards to that claim? Okay. Well, I, I need the motion.
The motion that we go ahead and pay for damages of what occurred.
And, and the amount of.
Nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine and eighty-eight cents.
Second, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then I've got the motion and the second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and, um, and so the other, uh, there's really no other items that we have, so I'll move to the adjournment in memory. I have one. Does anybody, Commissioner Vaughn, do you have any? Commissioner Modus, you do? Go ahead, Commissioner Modus. Do you have any?
Um, one I have is for, um, Senior Deputy Johnny Toontis, uh, from the Sheriff's, uh, the Harris County Sheriff's Office. Um, Johnny was my cousin, my first cousin, my mom's oldest brother's, oldest child. Uh, he passed away, um, on November, the evening of November second. Uh, he died after a month-long battle with COVID.
I'm so sorry.
He is the, uh, third, um, officer from the Sheriff's, uh, from the Harris County Sheriff's Office who has passed from COVID. Um, he's survived by, uh, his wife Sarah and three daughters. Uh, he is a Navy vet, and, uh, he was a really cool guy. I remember seeing him. They lit, they, they've lived in Humble, which is right outside Houston, their entire lives. That's where my aunt and uncle still live, and, and his, and Johnny's. That's where my aunt and uncle still live and, and his, and Johnny's siblings as well. And, uh, I remember seeing him during holidays and his times when they would come down and visit my grandparents when they were still alive. And just, uh, always see this cool kid who was about eight years older than me and he was already in high school, getting ready to go off to the Navy, and then hearing of all these stories of what he did in the military, uh, that were top-secret confidential stuff, and I just thought that was so neat, and so I always looked up to him. That was always fun to see him, and then just, uh, he's been battling with this for a really long time, and he, uh, he tried to hold on, but he didn't. His, his dad, actually, my uncle, had been really sick with this and recovered, uh, but Johnny didn't. So just my, my condolences to my aunt and uncle, Johnny and Ed, the Toontius, who are from Corpus Christi originally, and to Johnny's, his wife, his, his children, his siblings, all of my family as well, uh, at the loss of this, and just, once again, a reminder that COVID is not gone and, um, that it's still out there. And so, we are truly sad, it's kind of ironic, putting up campaign signs that evening, didn't even know he passed until I got a text message early, uh, yesterday morning that he had. So, um, I'm just truly heartbroken right now and especially for my family.
And our condolences to you. Commissioner, uh, Gonzalez has some, and I believe Commissioner Chesney.
My condolences to you, family, Commissioner. And, uh, I wanna just mention, uh, a lady, I think we all know her, you should, Olga Gonzalez, passed away a day before yesterday. Uh, I was called, and she passed away at home, they found her. Uh, Olga Gonzalez was, she, whenever time she had to call you, you answered the phone, she said, "How you doing, beautiful person?" That was her famous words, and I always used to tell her, "How you doing, beautiful lady?" You know, and she was very much, uh, she was a mover and a shaker at the Greenwood Senior Center. You know, and her, Ms. Bazan kinda really controlled the senior center out there, and when Ms. Bazan was around. And, uh, she loved politics, you know, and, and, uh, always getting involved, so, uh, I know she's gonna be missed, not only in the political arena, but also, um, at the center. And, uh, my part goes out to all the seniors there and her family, uh, our prayers, and, uh, she'd be very, very strongly missed.
Commissioner Chesney?
Thank you, Judge, um, I do have, uh, two or three today. Uh, the first one is Donna Weston. Donna passed away on October 24th, 2020, and Donna was a realtor here in Corpus Christi for many, many years and was very involved in the Cal Allen area, very nice lady. Uh, and, um, she will definitely, um, be missed after a, a long battle, battle with illness, so condolences to Donna Weston's family. The second one is, uh, Colleen McQueen, and Colleen was, uh, the mother, some of you may know, Deanna McQueen, who's li, lived and worked here in Corpus Christi for many, 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 many years. Um, and her mom passed away, she was 91, had a great life, and certainly condolences to the McQueen family. Also, um, Thelma Irene Teller, she was a longtime resident and participant in Port Aransas. Uh, she died at the age of 90, after a great life. She was, she took up in residence in Port Aransas during the Great Depression, living in a tent on the beach during her first year and a half there, according to a 2016 story published in the South Jetty. Pretty amazing life for, uh, Ms. Teller and, um, condolences to her family as well. Excuse me, and, um, choked there a little bit, my apologies. My last one is, um, Jean Lavelle, um, and Jean was 94 years old, and, um, he, um, he was a veteran and was just a pretty amazing man here in town. And, um, Jean's, um, son and his wife have a church here, I'm sure many of you know the Lavelle family, so condolences to, um, them and their loss of Jean Lavelle.
Okay, thank you, and, and my last one is Marsha Wasserman Bernie. She was 76 years old and she passed away on October 19th, 2020. Uh, Marsha was from Corpus Christi, um, and, uh, she actually, uh, went, graduated from WBEY High School. And she attended Brandeis University in Massachusetts, where she met her husband and a lifelong friend of our families, Ross Bernie. They managed their family, you might remember, uh, all these years ago, um, uh, had the most amazing specialty gift stores. Do you remember Card and Quill?
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
So that was her father. And, uh, so the Wassermans, Card and Quill, uh, was sort of, I don't know, one of my favorite places to go as a child. There were so many beautiful things inside and so much, so many friendly people, stores that you don't see anymore, quite frankly. And, um, at any rate, um, Marsha, uh, after getting married and, and moving back to Corpus Christi, helped her parents with the store for many, many years. And, uh, after it became, uh, Card and Quill, you'll recall that it became Francesca's. And then they moved, and then after Francesca's, many, many years, amazing obituary, so I'm trying to get to the highlights. But, uh, she had, um, really become, uh, just the person, uh, the executive in, in these stores. And she had an uncanny ability, it, it said, and to assist brides-to-be in designing their wedding invitations and offering advice in all matters of etiquette and party planning. And, um, she really was the go-to person for years and years and years on her expertise. She had a can-do attitude and a direct, no-nonsense advice that put clients to ease. I know she gave that to me many, many times, and, um, it was just, um, a really, very sad for me. You might remember her last adventure, it was a store called O'Gosh. So, from Card and Quill to Francesca's to O'Gosh, gosh, the Wasserman family helped generations of people do things brilliantly, um, and beautifully. And she always was hands-on, as was Mr. Bernie, and it was sad, um, for me, and not too long ago, that they retired in 2014. But she's maintained all her strong bonds with her family members and, um, she was just always so interested in, in everything around her. So, uh, for me, her zest for life, her keen intellect, and her genuine interest, um, her dry wit and her love for family will never be forgotten. Uh, may you rest in peace, my friend, Marsha Bernie. That's it for, uh, today's court with no further adjournments in memory, and having said that, uh, we are adjourned. The time is 12:31 for.